Am I the only one who's not in it?
So Steve, if we can get to roll, that'd be great.
Certainly, I mean, we're having apologize, we're having a little bit of technical difficulties with some of the invites, which is why we're starting a little later than normal. Anybody that's a panelist that's in the waiting room will move you over as soon as we can. But I'll start off with the role of the commission. Mr. Williams.
President.
Mr. Rowena.
Here.
Ms. Linkowski.
Here.
Mr. Schulman.
Here.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Bryce.
Present.
Ms. Lingalis.
Here.
And Mr. Batchnick.
Here.
And I think we have a couple commissioners trying to log in, but I think for the sake of the audience, we'll get started.
Uh, Steve, should we go in order? Or do we want to jump around because it seems like Adam is the first order is the subdivision. Adam raised his hand, so I guess you can.
I'm moving Adams coming over as a panel, he should be able to.
Okay, great. So the twenty twenty five O two sub I J group twenty four Belden subdivision proposed to subdivision attorney blank.
Thank you. Sorry, I am both under the weather, but also I couldn't get my link to work today.
Everyone, a lot of people are having trouble. Aileen's dealing with that right now, so you're not alone.
All right, thank you. So I Adam Blank for I J group. The, let me just. Actually, before I share my screen, let me just ask, um, so that I'm clear. There are two agenda items for this property tonight. One is a public hearing on the the subdivision application. And one is a, I'll call it a light follow up on some T M P.
Yep.
Comment related to the site plan. Are we tackling them both right now or are you trying?
No, I think Steve, let me know if this is wrong. I think we're going to do subdivision, continue the public hearings and then hit the site plan at the end. Is that right, Steve? Or do you want to handle them both at the front?
No, I think that I think you're correct. I think that you just need to make a motion to amend the agenda because they amended. We're at the, we're also have a new agenda software that we're working on some with some kinks on. So I think just amending the agenda to take action on each item after you hear the item like you traditionally do. So I would just because otherwise it's listed.
Right, but but so Steve, are we going to do twenty four Belden subdivision, twenty four Belden site plan? And then move, no, twenty four Belden subdivision, rest of the public hearing. Site, site plan later. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, cool. So subdivision time.
Okay, all right. So so I'm here for twenty four Belden Avenue, approximately one point four two eight acres. Uh, seeking a subdivision. Share my screen. So you should have the aerial up of the property right here. Uh, this is the site that we're going to try to subdivide. We've got with me tonight Vince Hines from Redness and Mead. He's the project engineer. See, our Jason Milligan had a conflict. He may or may not be on. He's going to try to join us. He may be a little bit late. And I'm really going to just give you a very brief presentation and then Vincent and to the extent Jason's available, they can answer any questions you have. But you've heard quite a bit about this property already, so I won't, I won't go into extensive detail. Um, you, we, you've got our application materials as well as the staff memo that I think sort of speak for themselves. But we'd like to subdivide it, the lot into two lots, two parcels. The one you can sort of see, I can zoom in a bit. Here. You can't zoom in. The, there's a blue line. Right here, that's where the subdivision line is proposed. Um, this property really functions as two separate parcels already. There's the, the OTB, the winners building, which is here. And it's got some sidewalk or public infrastructure that connects here. And then the rest of the site over here. So it's kind of confusing for them to have the same address and to be a single site. Um, so we, we propose to subdivide them out into two lots that would fully conform to your minimum building standards. Um, for both building and lot size and site standards in the C D four zone. Uh, you'd have twenty four Belden would be this parcel. Uh, and uh, I believe it's nine Burnell Boulevard would be the other smaller parcel. They'll continue to be served by city water sanitary sewers. No new streets are proposed. As you know, uh, we plan to redevelop the property as further detailed in the pending CAM application and the site plan review application. And those um, are sort of obviously described in those applications. Um, and again, those improvements are for the, the twenty four Belden lot with the nine Burnell parcel remaining as is. And again, they already operate independently. They don't share utilities as things stands currently. Um, they have different tenants. Um, and they, they are really operated by separate entities. So we think it makes geographic and practical sense to have them separated out into two parcels. But it also under your regs, it's, it's a non discretionary uh, request. Uh, and it complies fully with your uh, site plan and subdivision regulations. So I, that's my sort of, you know, two minute overview. If you need more, Vince can give it to you. Otherwise that, that's it.
Do any commissioners have questions? Lou, looks like you're about to ask something. And Tammy, I think you all are as well.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Lou.
I, I, I'm sorry, I was muted. Uh, uh, this is just a curious question. Um, why wasn't this land disposition work done before the application? It would have made more, it seems to me, it would have made more sense to do it at the beginning of the process rather than toward the end.
Um. It. I, I don't, so I, I'm trying to recall exactly what the timeline was, but, but part of it was in initially, we were going to uh, turn the whole property into a condominium. With the office tower is one unit, the apartment is one unit, the hotel is one unit. And the OTB is one unit. Um, that in fact is still that contemplated, that's essentially done waiting on the approvals. But it, but in, in furthering things along with the hotel and the apartments, it, it seemed clear that it would be better to have it subdivided out. But we also initially were working through with staff, um, how we'd have to subdivide it because that both parcels have to remain compliant with all of your regs. As independent parcels, not just as a single parcel. And we originally didn't think we could do that, um, but, but then we were able to working with Vince to, to make that possible.
Okay, thank you. Tammy, go ahead or?
Yep, thank you. Um, Attorney Blank. Do you have any um, vision or plans as to what happens to the bus station that's there? Maybe Steve, does the city have any thoughts on all this development and leaving the bus terminal where it is?
So I, I only know it's slightly better than gossip, but it's privileged, it's just close to that level, which, which is just that, that there's discussions of it being reconfigured in some way. I don't think that the city is or that, that they're planning on pulling it completely off the site. But, but I think reconfiguring the buses so that they come in parallel as opposed to sticking out in the road to allow the road to become two way. Um, and, and probably redoing the canopies and stuff uh, there along the, the frontage.
Okay, and that would just lead to another follow up question. Many years ago, when the bus terminal was renovated, there was a big conversation about whether there should be a public restroom there. And if, if there is an opportunity in your renovation or if the city is thinking of doing something, it might be a facility that could be added and, you know, there will be more activity there now that you're going to put these uh, the hotel and the apartments.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I run along the, the river trail there on the side of the bus terminal. And that is the public restroom right there on the trail and it's pretty nasty. So I think it probably would be a, an improvement if they can uh, get a bathroom put in there.
I did not have that on my bingo card for twenty twenty five. Thank you, Adam. Uh, any other questions? Seeing none, can we move to the public hearing or open this up to the public? Uh, just a reminder, ground rules for the public. Um, one time to speak, asking questions to the applicant, not asking, we're not, the commission is not going to engage back and forth with you. Please keep it PG and also please be brief uh, in your response. We don't have a time limit, but we just ask you to be concise. Uh, with that, Brian or Steve, can you open up the uh, public portion of this?
Sure. Anyone from the public, if you'd like to speak, use the raise your hand tool. If you're dialed in on phone, you hit star nine.
And just remind, this is speaking about the project in front, the subdivision in front of us. If there's other items that you want to speak for publicly, that you can come later on for.
First, we have Tanner Thompson.
Hi, Brian, am I coming through? Yep. Excellent. Um, yeah, thanks. Um, just uh, three quick thoughts about the, this parcel division at twenty four Belden. I, I want to reinforce what Attorney Blank said about the, the bus station staying. Um, I, um, in my capacity as the Chair of Bike Walk Commission, served on the Steering Committee for N T D Ahead, which was the Comprehensive Operational Analysis for the Norwalk Transit District. And the outcome of that was recently shared with the public and it involves um, switching up the many of the, the bus routes, but the bus hub at Burnell Boulevard is staying. I can speak also just as a member of the public, having seen the preliminary plans from a couple of years ago that T M P shared for the Wall Street Quarter Project. And it did involve having buses line up in, in parallel as opposed to coming in um, on the diagonal as they are now. So um, I guess the, the takeaway is yes, please continue to plan around buses being there because that is the plan. I want to also echo the sentiments about finding some way to do a public restroom there. Um, there's definitely a need for that, um, not only to spare the, uh, the verge along the trail um, from being used as such, but also because it would give a much needed amenity to transit riders and a little bit um, more dignity to, to the transit riders there. Um, and then third, I'm wondering if uh, the, that little strip connecting the two uh, large sections of the parcels. Um, given that it's so narrow and right next to the very, you know, public uh, bus hub, if that could just be maybe given over to the public right away. Um, I don't know. Um, I don't know if that's strategic or not, but it seems pretty straightforward. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mark Allen.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Mark Allen. I'm a resident of Norwalk at one twenty eight Gileys Lane. I'm also the president of the Wall Street Neighborhood Association. And I just wanted to speak uh, in favor of this uh, plan. Um, and also on behalf of Jason Milligan, the developer. And full disclosure, uh, he is also on the Board of Directors for the Wall Street Neighborhood Association. So I don't want to, uh, want to disclose that. But um, in general, uh, what he's brought to the community with the development of that property is just been so positive. Um, that property, you know, has been empty for a very, very long time, as long as I've been in Norwalk, which is about fifteen years. And uh, I just think that with NOCO, the college coming to the community and now being a renter at that location and it's, it's all moving in a very positive direction. I think it's been very beneficial to the community here. And I just want to see things keep going in that positive direction. And then uh, you know, not to speak for Jason, but to speak about Jason. Uh, I think he's become a very good community partner as well. I know that there, there's a long history here and you guys are know all about that. We don't have to talk about that. But I think Jason has come a long way as a developer in terms of becoming a really good community partner. And I think that um, I think that all things here are, are going in the right direction. And that's all I wanted to say. I, I just want to see them continue to go in that way. Thank you very much.
Next, Diane Larchella.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of Planning and Zoning Commission and the staff. Uh, tonight, uh, for the record, my name is Diane Larchella, twenty one Little Fox Lane. Uh, I wanted to echo Tanner and Mark Allen's, Tanner Thompson and Mark Allen's comments. But I just wanted to add the following about this particular project. Um, I've been a member of, uh, living in Norwalk for forty years. I can't believe time has flown by. But I wanted to say that this particular location, as some have said before, has been underutilized. Not bringing in the, uh, not only recognition, but traffic, meaning foot traffic as well as economic traffic for years. I think that Mr. Milligan, as Attorney Blank has stated, is attempting to add value to this important part of Norwalk. Um, I wanted to say that I also do believe that Jason is is, is, is at times a character, but he is a Renaissance man because you can count on both hands and, and feet, all of the properties that he has improved. And uh, really adding to the positive efforts. Um, I wanted to say lastly that I um, had been a member of the group in, in unison with uh, Mark Allen and the Norwalk, uh, Wall Street Neighborhood Association. We really came together on certain projects like the O and G project. Uh, the um, uh, some of the phase one and phase two, we saw each other, of course, at the, at the community meetings. So I do believe that this will be um, very important. And I do again, want to echo Tanner Thompson's um, discussion about some of the uh, pedestrian and bicycle amen, amenities. And I do believe I read when I quickly looked at this uh, particular project, that there will be some renewable energy and a green roof. So I'm so happy that Attorney Blank is now um, and, and Mr. Milligan are now um, uh, reflecting the, the environmental measures that I have been talking about for years and I couldn't be more pleased at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Seeing no other hands, going once, going twice. I think we're going to close the public hearing for the site plan. Review or leaving it, turning it over to Attorney Blank for rebuttal.
Uh, so I don't, I don't think I have any rebuttal um, other than the, um, there was a question about the, the public right of way. And um, I don't think we can create any additional right of way, although I will say that most, if not all of that strip, there's an easement on already um, for use for the bus uh, terminal. So um, so it effectively is a public right of way by virtue of the easement.
Thank you. With that, I think we will close the hearing and Steve, we're going to vote on this later, correct?
No, I, I think you can, uh, yeah, and Miss Wells is back just to.
Oh.
Pass the baton. Um, but yeah, I think you, you, you could do it two ways. The agenda lists all those votes, uh, voting items at the end. You could amend the agenda to, you know, take, take the vote now if that's what you would prefer to do.
Does anybody feel, Galen, let me know when you're settled.
I'm on my phone. Uh, I need Brian to text me the meeting ID number again.
Okay, so I'll keep it going then.
Yeah.
I'll keep going. Uh, let's, I don't, let's vote on this at the end with, as the agenda is, keep it rolling.
Gotcha.
Uh, next item up is uh, where'd my screen go? I think it's the capital budget, is it not? Did I make that up in my head?
Yep, you're right.
Yeah, the capital budget's there.
Capital budget, next. Uh, so Brian, Steve, are you guys doing any sort of presentation overview or is it just comments that we have and?
No, so, so just for tonight, the, the the purpose of the meeting is to allow any members of the public who wish to comment on the capital budget to make comments to the commission. So you can consider that as you um, look at the capital requests that were forwarded from the Finance Department. Uh, just a note to the public, the Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission does not have any vote power or veto power or they really, the role in this proceeding is to make sure the items proposed are consistent with the city's citywide plan. And they also can, you know, s- say to the mayor's office and council that, hey, we feel these items are important. We'd like you to consider them or fund them, but they don't have any particular vote. They don't adopt their own capital budget. Just keep that in mind.
One comment I had when I was looking at it is I was surprised that the East Avenue design for T M P got pulled. So if we can just note that as something to go back to the mayor's office, if folks are in favor of that, I think East Avenue is such a problematic area that we, with, especially with sixteen being reconstructed and with the potential there. And so if folks don't feel against that, I'd love for us to put that in whatever communication we go back. I know we don't really have much authority or power of how this works, but that's just something I noticed when reviewing it. I was like, that seems interesting.
Yeah, so at your next meeting, we'll have this item back on the agenda again, not for a public hearing, but you, that's when you can go through each of the items in there within any level of detail you prefer to.
Awesome. Cannot wait. Okay. Um, did anybody have any other questions, comments that they want to make now to Steve or Brian? Or to the rest of us? Going once, going twice. Okay, uh, let's move it over to the public hearing. Part of this again, uh, reminder what Steve said, our purview is, is items are within line of the P O C D, uh, which is fairly limited in scope. Um, that said, we certainly want to hear what folks have to say or think. Uh, same rules apply. Keep it PG, keep it concise and uh, let's go to the public.
Sure. So for members of the public, if you have, if you'd like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool to the bottom of your screen and you would click that once. And if you're dialing on a phone, you would hit star nine. We have, um, Ms. Larchella.
Good evening again. For the record, my name is Diane Larchella, twenty one Little Fox Lane. Um, first of all, I wanted to uh, of course, thank this commission for allowing the public to speak. I'm not sure there will be many people speaking on this particular budget. But however, I do want to say that I have not been pleased that the role of the Planning and Zoning Commission has been drastically reduced. And I do think we need more checks and balances. So if you could note or you'd be willing to note in your notes that you'll send on that um, uh, I do believe that in the past, the Planning Commission and then as it was combined as Planning and Zoning played a good role to be another set of eyes and ears as to which line items should take precedence over others. So I, I respectfully disagree with the way the city is interpreting this. Um, and I ask that, uh, I, I will ask in charter revision, but uh, I, I do think that's the case. As far as the actual capital budget, I was very happy uh, that there are items under the engineering, under operations and, and public works. Uh, I think it's item E eight, uh, green infrastructure. I don't know if you want me to name the project ID. I, I am toggling around on my.
No, I think, I don't think you need to say, say the project ID.
I don't know if you need citations. I do think, and I agree, uh, that was mentioned by the chair uh, under uh, the engineering, uh, East Avenue. Um, the T M P project, I think, uh, deserves another look. I do think um, that uh, it, it is a very strategic and important uh, place for people to get around. And there are currently, besides the construction, after that construction, there still are issues related to East Avenue that need expedition because of the, the way the community has changed with larger uh, residential communities along the river. Uh, the single family homes and multi-family homes in the area. So uh, please uh, make a note of that. Um, I did want to also say under the operations and public works, under park maintenance, so that's recreation parks. Um, I wanted uh, to ask uh, because I know you're, you are limited to P O C D. And I've helped over the many years, comment on P O C D as it's evolved over the years, every ten years. Um, this, number one, the South Main Community Center is uh, something that I am supportive of. However, um, because the uh, building management staff have once again made excuses why uh, solar um, renewable energy cannot work or will not be looked at unless there's money left over, if at all. I, I would love to see this commission because the, the P O C D stated that we would like to have our public buildings embrace um, renewable energy. And it's very tough to do that when you have a philosophy and policy by the very people in building management and their consultants who consistently, I have a record, a list of all the buildings where we're thinking of it, and then it doesn't pencil out in the end. And other cities and towns throughout the state of Connecticut have managed to put solar panels on uh, public uh, landfills, on public uh, buildings, schools and um, public works garages. Look at Newtown, look at Danbury, look at Fairfield. I have mentioned these towns and offered their names to the city for years. And I know, I feel the sentiment of many of the commissioners here is that we need to really step up on our renewable energy. I know you have made good steps with the private sector, but our public sector is, is a laggard. It just is, even though we have partial, um, partial uh, solar panels on, on our um, new build, new construction. Sometimes they usually come on after six months instead of right away when the building's open. The policy is not to place solar panels on existing buildings, which I think is a wrong headed way. And so I ask, in the case of this particular important building for South Newark and beyond, that someone makes a note to, to fund this in the next five years, I guess they've already gathered a lot of federal, hopefully federal money and the like. But it should have solar panels right up front instead of maybe woulda, coulda, shoulda. Second thing is uh, number two, the Broad River Baseball Complex. Uh, again, very uh, important to the community. However, I see kind of this creeping going on where a million here and a million there is added in the capital budget. I would like this commission, because of your role with P O C D, not or, or to strongly um, disapprove or strongly offer that it should not be artificial turf. Because I know that is what the intent is. And uh, in the case of the Broad River Baseball Field, it is very close to the, and does drain into a public uh, and a J, a, a down river, down brook. There's a tiny brook that flows towards and through the well field, the public drinking water well field. And so that's one reason, there have been many studies that show artificial turf will, when it rains. Um, uh, there are elements of, of pollutants that are injurious, not only to health of the ecology, but also for drinking water sources and the public. In addition to all of the problems that if, that children playing on this baseball field ha, it's been proven that their injuries, lower extremity, extremity injuries are much increased. So I do not know if this additional two million that's been added, once again, we already have several millions. I think we got some state money with Senator Duff. Uh, there must be plenty of money here, it seems. But because of the amount of money, I'm just afraid that this is a setup for artificial turf. I would like to know if the staff knows this. Is this going to be the end game of, of installing artificial turf? I, I am against artificial turf. I do believe that our Recreation and Parks Department needs to be funded in operating and capital so that they can actually maintain a natural turf field because it is done all over the world. And in fact, many people are now tearing up their artificial turf and going back to natural turf because it, of the injuries and the pollution issues and the cancer issues that have been found in soccer, women's soccer out west, et cetera. Uh, lastly, I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the work that was done on this. I do again, want to reiterate that I believe the good people on this commission, many of you have been living in Norwalk for years and you've given your time for years. I really think I would like to see you have line item comments, but it is not currently allowed with the policies of the city. And I think that's a, a wasted um, uh, just, just wasted intellect that, that can really help our city trim budgets in a way uh, that will help the taxpayer reduce their. Uh, that will help the taxpayer reduce their. Bottom line. So thank you for listening to me. I do again feel on all the public buildings, there is a. A wrong-headed solar and renewable energy policy, uh consistently not looking at. Um, uh, with enough serious, not only rooftop, but ground mounted and carport. And there's always an excuse. There's usually an excuse and you will be told, oh, well, we have solar panels on this building and that building. They're not optimizing it. And there are many places in Norwalk on public property where we could install ground mounted solar. At least and use geothermal, but it's not happening because there's a certain policy. So thank you for letting me speak. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Loricella.
Do we have? Yeah, one more, sorry, Nick. Um, City Hall Neighbor.
Hello?
Hello, if you can just give your name and address, I forgot to be asking people for that.
Yeah, great. No problem. Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Anthony Pavia. I reside at thirty four Buckingham Place. Uh, and I am speaking tonight in support. Of the capital budget item titled the East Avenue Design Study. Uh, both the City Hall Neighborhood Association. Um, and the Norwalk Green Association wrote to the mayor and relevant city staff earlier today. Uh, in support of this line item. So in the interest of uh efficiency, uh, I think I'll just summarize those comments here. Um, the City Hall Neighborhood Association strongly endorses. The line item uh in the capital budget for the East Avenue Safety Study. Over the course of the last three years, our neighborhood, um, along with other neighborhood associations. Have both vocalized and turned out in support of both studying and implementing ways to make East Avenue safer. Uh, for pedestrians, bicyclists and vehicles. Uh, a quick look at the Yukon um Connecticut Repository for Crash Data backs up this concern. Uh, and the need for thoughtful database solutions um is is critical. With recent changes to zoning that encourages denser zoning and potentially more residential unit uh uses in the corridor. Uh, I want to point out which our association has commented at these hearings in the past in support of. Uh, it's imperative to residents and businesses and nonprofits. Places of worship and least but not least, uh, city hall employees that live, work and worship in this corridor. That the study be funded after being in the budget uh for the past couple of years, but not fully funded. Uh, thank you for your time and um I look forward to following this through the budget uh process this season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pavia. Uh, with that, I just want to note that Commissioner Jordan Byron has joined us. And anyone else in the public want to comment? So you have one more?
Uh, yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. temporary Chair and uh. And uh Planning and Zoning Commission, um, I want to echo everything that Mr. Pavia just said, um, and also um for i- in in case it. Is useful, point out a a technicality here. The proposed uh four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the East Avenue Quarter Improvement Project. Does show up in the the department request, but it was zeroed out in the CFO's recommendation. And I think that technically tonight you're reviewing the department requests. Um, but I would argue, um, using all of the arguments just brought uh by Mr. Pavia, that this project is very much in line with the P O C D. And uh thus should be funded. Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Last call for comments on the capital budget. By once, gone twice. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on that. Steve, Brian, any comments? I think just, I think all of you need to just collect what people said and we can review that. Next time.
Yes, yep.
Great. Uh, okay. Moving on, next is agenda item twenty twenty five oh four, our Norwalk Planning and Zoning Commission Multiple Zoning Regulations Text Amendments. To Articles four and six, the Norwalk zoning regulations related to minimum parking requirements. Uh, Steve or Brian, are you gonna do or some a presentation of any sort or?
Yeah, I'll um, I'll pull the text up as soon as I can find the window and just. Walk the commission through it one more time and also for the benefit of the public, um. So they're aware of the changes, but. Of course, I have too many things open and finding that particular page. Oh, there it is. Got it. Okay, can you see that? Do you need me to blow it up a little bit?
Yes, please.
Okay. So just as kind of a background, um. When the commission approved the, you know, the wholesale changes to the zoning regulations in December of twenty twenty three. Sort of at the tail end of that process, there was a uh amendment request made to. Eliminate parking in and around some transit stations. And so the outcome of that was. Within what we're now calling the C D four zone, which is really the city's urban core, which stretches from north of Wall Street. South down towards Concord Street um in South Norwalk. That that area within that zone would be exempt from having to provide parking. Uh, and after that came out. There were numerous discussions uh and concerns raised, you know, through the mayor's office about, you know, the impacts of that. And perhaps we should. You know, move in at a slower pace and and scale that back. So we've been talking to them. You know, over the past year and and so at the we're at the stage now where we've. Come up with some compromise language that, you know, still. It is loosened the parking regulations from where they were prior to the enactment of the new regulations, but doesn't allow kind of a blanket. Exemption from having to provide parking. Um, and some of these changes that I'm going to talk about were in the prior regulation. So we kind of. Went back to some of the. Some of the ways you could alleviate the parking standards previously and also added a few new tweaks. Um, first one to touch on is there's an existing table in the reg- regulations now that provides a, you know, percent reduction in proximity to transit. Uh, the one change you'll see on the screen is treating the Norwalk Transit Hub area similar to what we do at South Norwalk. So with the earn within an eighth of a mile, you get a twenty five percent reduction from a ten percent reduction. Um, and then expanding out to a quarter mile, you get to do ten percent where previously there was no reduction. Um, so number two, I sort of talked about, that was the language which which had stated. That if you're within the C D four and C D four W zones, that you were not required to provide any parking. Um. So what we did was we came up with a couple of different um compromise clauses to include within the regulations. The first one being. That uh, within the C D four zone and C D four is W zones, um. If you're within a half mile of the South Norwalk Train Station, because that's where we see, you know, basically the greatest amount of development going on in the city. You have the ability through special permit to request a complete reduction in parking. And what we've done with with uh one B there. Has added uh four new criteria in addition to the special permit criteria that. An applicant would have to demonstrate to the commission satisfaction in order to gain approval for that. So it's it's a special permit. So you have broad control and say whether that should be approved or not approved, but that that's a new standard. Which provides some potential relief. Um, you know, you'd have the ability to modify any proposal that came in, but you're not obligated to do so. The second one um is basically something that was on the books previously, just tweaked a little bit. So what that one's saying, if you're within that same zone. But you're beyond that half mile radius from that South Norwalk Train Station. You can request to exempt yourself from parking, but you're required to provide um a fee in lieu of parking and that fee is. Uh, proposed at twenty thousand dollars a space. We acknowledge that. A structured parking space is more than twenty thousand dollars a space, but we kind of look at it as as a. Chip effort with the city should the commission um see see that that was prudent. Both uh one and two would have to go to T M P for comment and consideration. And the same additional criteria that were required for number one are also included as part of the second proposal. Anybody have any questions before I scroll down?
Uh, Steve, I have a question about that uh twenty thousand dollars. Um, while it might pay for uh a surface uh parking space uh today. Um, I'm a little bit concerned that five or ten years down the road. Uh, it won't. Uh, is there some way? That uh we can alert ourselves to take a look at that perhaps every five years. Uh, to see if the number ought to be modified.
Sure. Yeah. And then I guess the only question would be whether it makes sense to, I'm not sure if it it's makes sense or is appropriate to put that into the regulation, but I think. Looking at it on a periodic basis, revisiting it based on construction cost, inflation, all those factors makes perfect sense. It's just a question of. How do we make sure we actually follow through on that?
Okay, thank you.
Steve, I have a quick question on the previous one that you did uh the on the T O, right at the state, the railroad station. Um, that that project that's going on right now has a pretty significant parking garage going in, does it not?
The uh, the project, so there's the one at Tim Monroe, which is just about. Complete. And then there's a proposed one at Chestnut Street.
Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about.
Yes, that's got a pretty significant parking garage. That has parking. I can't remember the exact ratio if it was one space per unit or or they built to the one point three, but it also has additional parking spaces. For the train station that was part of the agreement when they purchased land from the city.
But I my, excuse me, my question is how how um does that parking garage relate to the overall? Um, project that's being done in terms of the ratio of parking? In other words, if we if it, what would what would the applicant be looking to eliminate? Parking for now? That would be the new structures or going back retroactively to what's there?
Well, that would be, you know, it would be hard to do that in some instances, just based on how those garages are construction and where they're constructed within the site. Technically, I suppose somebody that already had an existing garage or an existing approval could come in and ask for a special permit to. Don't, you know, demo their garage or retrofit the garage and turn it into development, but that that might be difficult, but they. Certainly could entertain it and ask the question. And again, you guys have kind of blanket control over where you felt that was appropriate or not appropriate. And that would be based on. All right, this is what we're seeing for parking demand. A at the train station and and seeing for parking impacts on some of the residential neighborhoods that spur off of that. So I think that's that's the kind of. Information you would use to make your decision on that kind of application.
Does it appear to um staff that the um reduced parking has worked out at the T O D projects?
Yes, from from what we've seen and heard is that. You know, Brian, I talk to folks all the time about. Potential projects. No one is actually proposing no parking that we've seen, especially in in this area. And along West Avenue from the projects we've looked at, they they've kind of said, we need to provide at least some parking. So I think it's. I think that ratio of at least one space per unit seems to be a a good floor at this point in time from what we've seen. I mean, I'm sure there's possibility, some lots just. Might not be conducive to putting in parking if you wanted to have a development that had any kind penciled out really and had any kind of impact, but we haven't seen that at this point.
Yeah, I'm only asking because my. Informal driving around Norwalk. Um, it it would appear that at the larger projects that the the lower ratios are are. Seeming to work. Um, I'm concerned as I was a couple of years ago when when. These these ratios were being applied to the smaller apartment buildings on the smaller streets. Uh, especially around the hospital. Um, uh, but anyway, that's, I've said that already, so I won't say it again, but it does look like the the. Larger uh buildings, this is working.
Yeah, yeah. And that's something we'll continue to look at too. And I think maybe, you know, from a s- citywide perspective, looking at the parking in totality. And seeing if those smaller developments, that ratio that we put in, you know, several years ago now is right, or do we did we need to up that at all? But I think in in these areas that once per space seem, one space per unit seems to work pretty well from what we've seen.
Thank you.
Steve.
Um, yep, go ahead.
Thank you. Do you foresee anything like this happening to say either a single family or a two family home? Like, take for example. The hospital neighborhood, if somebody was, I don't know if there's any vacant land up there, but if somebody was just building. A single family or a two family house, they would. They would have to have off-street parking, but they. Would they end up, like, let's just say for some reason their property didn't have enough space for off-street parking? Would they have to pay the twenty K?
No, they wouldn't be eligible for this because they're not in this that that zone. So it's strictly within the C D four and C D.
Okay, so nothing, even if the half mile doesn't incorporate a C D uh four area, because. You know, some part of East Norwalk might, the Rowington Station may, I don't know, some part of South Norwalk might actually just get up into the residential.
Yeah, I mean, it's both and. So it's both the C D four, four W and the half a mile. So it sort of solves that sort of problem of. I guess leakage, for lack of a better word.
Mm hmm. I just, okay.
Yeah. So if you're not in the C D four, four W zone, you you don't take advantage of this at all.
It doesn't, okay, it doesn't apply. All right. Thank you.
Yep. This is just more language that was some of the requirements related to the fee and loop, just to point out that the fee and loop per statute. That the funds have to go into uh and be dedicated to either improving existing parking facilities, construction of new parking facilities. It can't just go into the general fund. So that's just something to to point out. Sorry, this likes to bounce a page every time I get to the bottom. So this this language was was in the old regulations, so we propose to carry it forward. So. Within the C D four and C D four W and and good examples to think about this are on. Wall Street or Washington Street. If if somebody had a historic building. And they wanted to either change the use or make additions to that, they are exempt from providing parking.
That's not to say no commercial, all commercial, it's only commercial within a historic.
That's to say, yeah, if you're within a historic structure, you're exempt. It's not necessarily related to commercial. So if you had like the.
Gotcha.
The idea being that you're going to keep that. Ground floor or the, you know, say it's a two-story building, you're going to keep that historic facade, but you want to build on top of it, you're you're allowed to do that.
So Steve, for example, the hotel that um is. Uh, that we approved um next to the other hotel on Main Street, Main Ave. If they had kept the historic facade, that hotel would not have a parking requirement?
Okay, so. Potentially, but the only issue with. That particular development was that the, at the time, the hotels were allowed to go up to um eight stories by special permit. So I don't know if we would have seen the same project under the new regulations. So we dropped, we dropped that clause, but that was within the old regulations. So. Hard to say for certain. But somebody could theoretically, something else to keep in mind too, is that. Washington Street and Wall Street have the predominance of the historic structures. And the the height is limited on those streets as too. So we wrap that around. So you're not allowed to go. As high on on most of those streets. There might be a couple of historic properties. Where that doesn't apply, but by and large, most of them are restricted to like four stories. So you're not allowed to go from two stories to six stories, for example. There may be a property or two where that's possible, but by and large. The the bulk of those couldn't take advantage of that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um, one other change that was. This this was something that was put into the new regulations that talks about um. Really dealing with parking maximums where you couldn't exceed the um total number of. The minimum number of parking requirements by more than ten percent. And and. We had a conversation with an architect who about some other things and he brought this up, saying, you know, you you guys had lowered the retail parking. Standard, for example, so you're reducing the total amount of parkings that like a larger shopping plaza could put in. And he recommended increasing that percentage. Um, so we've done that. And then the key thing to remember is. Even if they increase it by ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent, the. Spaces they add above the minimum have to be pervious. So you're still, you're not getting that, you know, worry or concern about more runoff, but you're getting uh. The ability for them to add additional parking to, you know, park their sites and park their developments. And again, this is, I kind of touched on this earlier, but this is the section. Dealing with the historic. Developments and historic properties. There are some caveats that do go along with that in terms of how the, the buildings are constructed. Since most of them are historic in nature. That they have to comply with certain standards to make sure that what's being built on top of that doesn't kind of deteriorate or take away from. The historic feel of the existing buildings and that language. Sort of carried forward from the prior language. We just cleaned it up and, you know, made it a little more concise. Any questions about that one? Just about at the end?
Yeah.
Okay. And this, this just because of the removal of. The CD four and CD four W from exemption, we had to just delete that sentence, otherwise it wouldn't work. That's all.
Are there any questions from the commission at this point? Seeing none, I guess we're going to the public hearing portion of this. Remind you to the public, please state your name and address. Please. The all the same rules apply. Brian, over to you.
Uh, we'll start with Jason since he's. Are you there? Jason, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hey, good evening, commissioners. Jason Milligan, 48 Wall Street. I wanted to talk about this parking. I. There's a little bit of a disconnect. Most people aren't really thinking about this in the right perspective. And I want to set you completely straight that just because you require parking or not. That is one input for someone thinking about what they're going to develop. If they can put parking, almost every developer will put parking. And, uh, you know, they'll put an appropriate amount. It's degrees of difference of how much they'll put. Is it one to one, 1.3? You know, nobody, this has been a rule for one year exactly. And not one developer has built zero parking. And I don't know if anyone's even built less than one to one. I can tell you that there are quite a few properties that are very constrained by parking. In Washington Street and Wall Street. Now on Washington Street, 40 years ago, that was redeveloped without regard of whether or not you could put parking. And it was a city project and the city owned or was it controlled all of it? And they had parking fields and they looked at it kind of as one big project. Well, Wall Street is drowning in parking. It has. Three public parking facilities, two surface lots and one 500 car garage. Has never been full in the, since its existence of 1962. And it's currently three, two or three levels are rented full time. To car storage or a car dealership and police vehicles. So there, there's also several churches that barely use their parking lots. There's the Eagles Club, which has a large lot. There's some office buildings and medical buildings that are very underutilized, especially at night. And so we are decades away from people building low and no, no parking before we'd have any issue. And, you know, by requiring or penalizing it. You're further preventing development in Wall Street, which is already not seeing development. If you look over the past few decades, there's almost no development. And for a year, you took away the parking and it still wasn't like everyone raced to the, the, the finish line to put up development. I will tell you that in the previous regulations. You know, this, this isn't a huge change to go when you went a year ago and said, no parking required whatsoever, eliminating all parking. Because Wall Street had been whittled down anyway, and they had exempted a large portion of it. Right? For a variety of reasons. The beauty of what you did a year ago. Is you didn't put a bunch of steps or you didn't have to hire a separate consultant or a historic architect. Or be measure how far you are from a train or a bus. It was just exempt. And the thing is. It seems reasonable to say, oh, just get a historic architect involved. You already have to go to follow all of the new regulation rules, which are onerous, very onerous. Now, I'm not going to say they're not well intentioned. But they are onerous. By the time you add up the EV, the solar and the impervious surface and the other environmental stuff and the other electrical stuff. But you also have to hire a third party architect and have the redevelopment agency review it. So you're, you're getting reviewed and reviewed and. You're, if, if you want to stymie Wall Street, this is a great way to do it. If you leave the parking exemption, and I, I'm not going to comment for the rest of the city. I think that the policy is fine because it hasn't hurt you. I think if you left it there and studied it and all of a sudden you had a race towards it and everybody was building no parking, maybe you would change it. It seems very reactionary and I can't help but notice that it may be in response to my two projects that came through. Uh, and TMP being a little bit upset about it, but. I will tell you that there are several properties on Wall Street that cannot build parking. So if you're going to say you have to pay 20,000 for each space you can't build, you will see that places stand still. The, the next thing I want to point out is the affordability plan was just completed. And it was pretty clear, we're very short on affordable housing. And all of the above approach seems to be the recommendation, right? Lots of different types of properties. Parking is a huge expense that does get passed through to the renters. And there is a segment of society that is not car centric. Is it everybody? No, but it's large enough that those people should be rewarded with discounted rents. And if you look at the historic charming part of Wall Street, it tends to attract quite a few people who live and work in the neighborhood. I mean, it's uncanny. It dozens of people and that. Uh, those people don't need their car every day. They're happy to walk a block or two and pay $25 a month to, to park their car. And many of them don't have cars. And it seems strange to people that do, including me, but they, they wear it as a. With pride that they don't have a car. So. I ask you to consider leaving the exemption, not, not requiring parking. For some period of time, at the very least, six months to a year and study it. I can promise you, this reaction is not based on empirical evidence. It is based on. My projects or, or people having theory. Actual, actual practice. And now, by the way, we spent a lot of money hiring this consultant from far away and it took three years. And there was a lot of people that spoke about this parking. It wasn't done willy nilly. It, it was thoughtful. Now, did it include everybody who had thoughts about it? No, but. It would make sense to let it play out. And gather actual data because sometimes our knee jerk reactions and our theories are wrong. And that's how you get change and progressive change. There are plenty of cities. In the New York Times, two weeks ago, there was an article about cities are moving away from parking minimums. And they find that, you know, some people take advantage of it, but it gives you variety. You want variety. You don't want only. One type of development, the fortress style of development that walls themselves off around a big parking garage. You want the, the ones that interact with the, the people around them and. This inadvertently will prevent that. So. Uh, I hope that you consider just waiting because in actions, it's not urgent. It's not an emergency. There's nothing pending that's going to hurt you. There's nothing even planned that I, I can tell you that's at scale. Because there's one other thing I will tell you. And I talked to Spinnaker. If they have not built any without parking and nor would they, even one to one, they're reconsidering going back up a little bit higher. Because when you build a highly amenitized building with larger units, those tend to attract the people with cars. If you build smaller units or the starter apartments with people that maybe can't afford a car, they've got a, you know, they'll, they'll use public transportation. Well, then you don't have a car and, and those are the people that might take advantage of it. Uh, but the other thing that happens too. There are a lot of other people that put restrictions on the type of development you do. It's not just zoning. It's not just city. If you're going to do a large development, you have to go to the capital markets. You have to go to large banks. You have to try and, you know, you may have, uh, you have a lot of big entities. To talk to and all of them have concerns and they're, they wouldn't want you to have something that would be hard to rent. So. With all that to consider. Wait and see approach, which is typically your guys' approach is very appropriate in this instance. But if you are feeling like you have to race and put. In the, the parking requirements again, I would. Beg you or ask you very, very nicely to leave Wall Street at least back to the way it was, right? Back to how it was in the old regs. And in the new regs, it was, it was a further exempting, uh, most of the streets. And, um, it would coincide nicely with all of the public infrastructure. So not only is Wall Street like hampered by no parking. And historic buildings, historic buildings are charming, but they are expensive to get back and read and adaptable reuse. But we're also going to be under construction for the next three, four, or five years while the streets are ripped up and sidewalks and crosswalks and. And new lights are put in and all of that is just another layer of, of the F S L pass to get people to come in. So. I hope you all consider that. And consider that it's, it's not, it's not an emergency. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Milligan.
Uh, next we have Mark Allen. Mark, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Just your name and your address, please.
Sure. Mark Allen, 128 Gillies Lane, president of Wall Street Neighborhood Association. Uh, just to echo what Jason said, um, the types of. The, you know, the, the type of residential, we, we are all for increasing residents in, especially in the Wall Street area. But we are definitely looking for the type of more like boutiquey type apartments that are not necessarily inhabited by people with cars. You know, we want to increase residents, but we don't necessarily want to increase the number of cars in the Wall Street area. Uh, we definitely want it to be more of a pedestrian, mobile friendly community. That said, you know, we have a lot of new students moving to the Wall Street area. Going to factor in around tech, going to Noah Conservatory. These students, there's a lot of opportunity for student housing. But these students aren't necessarily coming with cars also. So we want to, we want to see it, that type of situation continue in the Wall Street area. My concern is that when you. Introduce this parking requirement and when you have a, say, $20,000 per square, you know, parking space requirement. That sort of encourages the development of properties like Waypoint. You know, I mean, these are, these are, these are fine places to live, but that's not the type of development that we want to see. In the Wall Street area specifically. Um, so in terms of. To my knowledge, when South Norwalk and Washington Street was redeveloped and preserving the historic nature of those properties. There wasn't any sort of parking requirement for those properties. So we want a similar level playing field for Wall Street. We want to see, you know. We want to be able to re, you know, redevelop Wall Street, but at the same time. You know, uh, have a very similar situation to, to what Washington Street had. The benefits of being able to develop without having that sort of layer of bureaucracy that inhibits growth. Uh, that's it. Thank you very much for, for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Next we have Tanner Thompson.
Hello, I'm coming through again.
Yep, just state your name and address, please.
Of course, Tanner Thompson, 16 Hillside Place, number K5. I will try and, and keep this condensed, um, but I have a few, several thoughts prepared. I'm here with a few other members of the group that I hope all of you remember the name of, which is Sustainable Streets Norwalk. We, back about a year and a half ago, when the city was originally rewriting the zoning code. Um, we made a principled, evidence-based argument in favor of reducing parking requirements in walkable transit rich parts of town. Many of you, I hope, will recall that we drafted a four-page memo and. It had, you know, dozens of citations on it, uh, and we collected signatures from 30 different. Uh, engaged Norwalkers, including several council members. For this hearing, we had relatively less notice and so we don't have a memo or, you know, and or 30 people to speak. But we do have a few people and I think that our arguments still stand. Uh, I'll summarize a couple of those arguments and then I have some specific feedback on the proposed regulations themselves. Um, so first off, um, much of the discussion of this issue. In, in the memos that were posted and, and in the P and Z meetings recently has centered around a demand, the concept of a demand for parking as if. This demand were immutable and untethered from other considerations. The mayor's letter argues that many residents come to Norwalk with vehicles and cites that in the 2020 census, vehicles per household reached in Norwalk, reached an all time high of 1.73. Um, I am not arguing that that number is not true. Of course it is true. But it is not a number that we need to submit to as if it's a fixed law of nature. It is in large part a product of the housing that we allow to be built. People moving to Norwalk. In large part decide whether they're going to bring a car based on whether the housing available has parking. To put this more directly, if every housing option available to you as you're looking for housing includes a parking spot or two. That's just bundled in with your rent, of course, you're going to bring a car if you already have one. If you're moving up from the city, you'll probably acquire one. But, um. If that's, if, if there are options available for people. Um, that allow them to have rent because they're not paying for a parking spot. Then I think that we'll get a lot more people who, who opt to try out our, our non-driving options that we are investing in as a city. If we can't lower the parking requirements, then I think we should at least have a conversation about. Requiring landlords to unbundle parking and rent so that even if a building has a bunch of parking, that if you're renting a room there. Um, or a unit there that, uh, you're not required to also pay for the parking spot by virtue of it being bundled in. My second point is, um, I want to echo part of what, what Jason Milligan said about, um, the current abundance of parking that we already have. Obviously. Some of that is municipal, some of it is private. But regardless of who owns the park, and the fact is that. Wall Street and South Norwalk, uh, the, everything's owned as CD four is currently swimming in parking. You know, it's, I, I haven't done the detailed analysis, but it's, it's something around like 30% of the land area is parking. And that's a ton for a downtown, for multiple downtowns that were built long before automobiles were, were introduced and. So before we add even more parking to the supply and, uh, you know, invest. Hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially. In capital in building even more parking for these areas, thus attracting more car traffic to these areas. We should. Uh, employ every tool available to make better use of the parking, the extensive parking that is already there. We can start with the Yankee Doodle Garage. It seems like, uh, based on the letter from TMP that there's a lot of concern that the Yankee Doodle Garage will get overwhelmed, but it's currently super underutilized. And there's no way that, um, development in that area will move fast enough to overwhelm.
Oh, no, I don't know if I'm you.
The underutilized Yankee Doodle Garage, uh, before the city is able to conduct the traffic study. Um, that they desire to do and then whatever interventions come after it. I want to echo the point that Mark Allen made, um, that Wall Street is growing very quickly as a neighborhood for students to live. Um, students are one of these demographics most likely to opt for a cheaper apartment without parking instead of. The more luxurious apartments that have parking bundled in. Now to the, to the proposed regs. I do want to grant that the, uh, the first part of the proposed changes, the one with the, the table and amending the table. The table four, three, 12 B four parking reductions near mass transit facilities. This, uh, amending this table was actually our option number one that we proposed in our memo back in 2023. Um, zone based reductions, which is what, um, the commission ultimately adopted was our option number two. Um, but the proposed regs today, we feel are not near strong enough. Um, we originally proposed in our memo. Eliminating or, or giving essentially a hundred percent reduction. Within a quarter mile of South Norwalk Station and Merritt Seven Station, because they already have dense development nearby. Um, and then reducing by 50% within a half a mile. Near East Norwalk Station and the Norwalk Transit Hub. Um, we recommended reducing minimums by 50% within a quarter mile and 25% within a half mile. These reflect distances that. That many people that even the median person, um. In the United States is willing to walk, um, between a quarter mile and a half mile, um, based on a citation that we provided. In our memo originally, um, it's from the USDOT. So our first recommendation is to, um, to increase those numbers in that parking reduction table near mass transit facilities to those higher levels. Also wanted to comment on the, the special permit approach. Certainly, uh, allowing developers to get to a. Reduction, up to a full reduction of, of the parking requirement. Through special permit is better than nothing, um, but we worry that it will slow down development unnecessarily, um, thus contributing further to our housing crisis. Um, we're also concerned that this will disproportionately impact small developers who don't have the scale or the expertise. who don't have the scale or the expertise or the bandwidth that large developers do. So potentially, um, if there could be a carve-out for for units that are, you know, below a certain threshold, maybe eight units, um, that they wouldn't be subject to the special permit process, maybe that could take care of it. Um, we also want to give credit to the the fee and lieu idea. It's a, it's an idea that has had success in a lot of parts of the country and I want to recognize that this was adopted even before the current, the the latest rewrite of zoning code, um, back in the the downtown area plan, whatever it was called. Um, to the point about um, the fee potentially changing in the future, um, it seems like pegging it to inflation i- is a very reasonable strategy there. Um, that concludes my comments. Thank you for listening, uh, and I hope you'll uh take them seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Next, uh, we have Paul Fox.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, indeed. Just your name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Paul Fox and my address is eleven Hanford Place. Um, I would like to echo a lot of the points that uh Tanner Thompson made. Um, I think that uh it's important for Norwalk residents to have options in terms of the lifestyle that they live. And that includes um not having a car. I currently live in Norwalk and do not have a car. Um, but nonetheless, I have a dedicated parking space for the apartment in which I live, which I have nothing that I can do with, which is presumably bundled to my rent. This is obviously not an ideal state of affairs and I think it is likely to discourage a lot of people from coming here without a car. Um, and I think it's especially just unfortunate because I live within a quarter mile of so- South Norwalk Station where nominally, a lot of people could live without a car, either commuting into the city or um going throughout Norwalk um to run errands or visit friends or any other daily business via the bus system, which serves this area quite well. Um, I think that uh, I do think that there's some legitimacy to concerns about parking issues um in various neighborhoods. But I think that there, these concerns are better addressed via um kind of enfor- enforcement policies through monitoring the state of public parking and looking at what demand actually is. And um, you know, studies that that T M P or the Parking Authority or other uh city departments could undertake over time. And I don't think that there's, I don't see any urgent um issue that is emerging right now in any of the C D four zoned areas that would warrant uh such a big rollback of this policy. I'd also like to speak specifically uh to the proposal for um special permit process, as as Tanner Thompson pointed out, um, that it it's potentially an issue where large developers may be able to put together the resources to do the necessary, gather the necessary evidence and apply for a special permit. But a lot of um, you know, most individuals and smaller developers just won't be able to take advantage of that. Um, and I think that the effect of that is going to be that really only large developers will be able to build transit-oriented development in Norwalk. And I think that would be really unfortunate because um, as several folks have pointed out, large developers tend to prefer large developments. So you get things like the Waypoint, which is fine, but that's not the only kind of housing that Norwalk needs. I think that Norwalk has a real need for more missing middle development, medium-density stuff that is much more commonly built by individuals or by smaller developers and just wouldn't be realistic to, you know, I'm talking to stuff about, like, stuff about, I'm talking about stuff like row homes and um quadplexes and um, you know, three-over-ones, small, small development that can be street-centric and can fit well into our um transit-rich neighborhoods like Sono and Wall Street. Um, and I think that if we shut that kind of development out, we're going to get a lot of the same kind of development around our transit hubs and it's going to turn a lot of people away, especially young families and young professionals who are going to want something maybe a little bit more substantial than um than a uh, you know, small apartment in a big building or who might want to live in a friendlier neighborhood, but who don't necessarily want to live, don't, who don't necessarily want to bring a car and do want to take the train. Um, and that includes me. I know that was a little bit rambly, but um, uh, thank you for listening, for hearing me out.
Thank you for that, Mr. Fox.
Next, we have Ben, uh, excuse me, Ben Hampeter.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, indeed. Just name and address, please.
Yep, uh, my name is Ben Hampeter. I live at fourteen Havon Street. Um, and I think that the new zoning regs that were adopted a year ago um were a really modest but important step um by, you know, done by eliminating the parking minimums in C D four. Um, that was really encouraging to show that Norwalk was being serious about lowering housing costs, increasing sustainability, um, and making our urban centers more livable. Um, I'm sure as as you all know, that when we build excessive parking as parking minimums demand, um, our cities are hurt by increasing cost of development, stifling new business creation, um, and forcing buildings to be further apart, which disincentivizes people to get around by walking and biking and transit. Um, and it it just impacts the overall pleasantness of our city. I mean, these are all, all, you know, things that the P O C D um is designed to to fight against. So it is pretty disappointing to learn that the mayor and T M P are are requesting that these uh new regulations be rolled back to the way things that, the way they used to be. Um, and I think it really kind of calls into question the administration's commitment to the principles of the P O C D. Uh, to echo some of the previous speaker's comments, I think that if these are rolled back, it will just put on needless additional red tape that will slow down housing development and keep housing costs high for Norwalk. Um, and to to try to put this in some context, you know, there's, there's dozens of other American cities that have fully abolished parking minimums citywide, not just in their urban cores. Um, some of these are places you might expect, you know, big cities with lots of transit like San Francisco and Portland and Cambridge. Um, some other cities that are a little bit less expected, like Austin, Buffalo and Raleigh. Um, and then a lot of small cities that, you know, have uh transit and and walkability that's really on par with Norwalk. Um, or or in some ways is even worse than Norwalk, um, places like Gainesville, Florida or Longmont, Colorado, or our neighbors in Bridgeport, um, they've all abolished their parking minimums citywide. Um, and, you know, a number of these places have had, have had this in place now for years. Um, and you don't see headlines uh saying what a disaster it's been. Um, so, so if they can do this, then why can't Norwalk do this just in our urban core? Um, the mayor and T M P have both cited that they want to do an additional study to to figure out what the impacts are going to be. But I think that Norwalk really just needs to quit studying and start acting. You know, we have crises of housing affordability and climate change and this demands action, not sitting on our hands for another two years and, you know, fifty thousand or a hundred thousand dollars to do another study um just to have the same conversation again down the line. Um, I really encourage P and Z to keep the regulations as they are um and recognize the important part that they play um in boosting Norwalk's development into a more affordable and more sustainable city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hampeter. Would anyone else uh from the public like to speak on this matter? I think Attorney Blank is trying to speak for him.
Yep, go ahead, Adam.
Thank you. Um, so yeah, so A- Adam Blank, I live here in Norwalk, forty-nine Bartlett Ave. Um, and obviously I do a fair amount of work with uh Mr. Milligan, so I'm not going to say I'm speaking entirely independently because I I do do a lot of work with him, but I am sort of speaking for myself here. Um, I, I do hope that you'll at least put a pause on the, this reg change, the parking reg change um for this evening and and give it a little bit more um contemplation. I mean, one for the Wall Street neighborhood, certainly, there's an enormous amount of capacity and, you know, if there comes a day when all of those spots are filled uh because there's just too many people and there's actually a parking problem in that neighborhood, you guys should all just high-five each other and resign because you've done your job. I mean, uh, that, that's a, a, a real good problem to have um as opposed to being able to say, we put in really good strict parking requirements and we kept the Yankee Doodle Garage empty for the next thirty years. Now, I I don't know that that's really a goal um or an accomplishment. Um, so I I don't think that this reg is needed. Um, I also just want to sort of emphasize for you, you know, the, the parking and your density re- uh limitations uh significantly impact what people pay for their apartments. Uh, I've got a project that you'll see in the next six months, has nothing to do with Jason. Um, and in that project, and you'll, you'll understand why when it comes in front of you, the density that the developer would like to do is probably three times what's allowed. Um, and what, and what they normally do, their uni- their normal unit mix and unit sizes are nice size units and they do a lot of work in Norwalk and around the state. And for this particular project, they, they can't do the density that they would normally like. So what will they do? They're going to double or triple the size of all of the units. Because they just, if you can't do two hundred units, you can only do seventy, you make seventy really big units. Those become seventy really expensive units because your density limits what you can build. I've got another project in South Norwalk with a different developer that we were looking at doing about seventy units, is a completely different project, about seventy units. But we realized we can only park it to about forty-five units if your new regs pass. So what was the discussion? This was today. The discussion was, okay, well, let's switch it up and do larger units so we can do about forty-five or forty units and meet the parking requirements. And we'll just make much more expensive, larger units than we otherwise would have done because of the parking reg. And so one, there there really are real real consequences of having um fairly strict parking regs. Um, and it it's going to result in higher-priced units um and it eliminates a whole lot of uh flexibility. I don't think it's a real problem now. Um, and and the special permit criteria that's been proposed to sort of, I'll say, opt out of the parking requirements or get a better deal on the parking requirements, they're not going to get used by developers. Um, you know, the, to do a development application, to come in front of you and make it through the process, probably on a decent-sized project is a two hundred, three hundred thousand dollar commitment from a developer. And if they're basing their, on having a, having a parking that doesn't meet your requirements and hoping for a special permit to be granted, that's too much risk to spend that kind of money on. And if you look at what the special permit criteria actually says, it's not really just like, oh, if you're in the C D four and you're close to the train station, you can, you can pay a fee. There's like seven more criteria that are very, very gray, very subjective, that would give no one any assurances or comfort that they would actually get the special permit. So they just won't apply. They'll, they'll go with the regular site plan uh application and and build the one-to-one or one point three to to one uh for the parking. So again, I I would love for you guys to not make a change. If you're going to make a change, to at least do some, give it some thought before you make the change or carve out the Wall Street area as a starting point and say, we're gonna, we're gonna create a a trial period here for some number of years without parking and see what happens. Um, I don't, I don't think it's going to be so terrible. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Blank. Uh, calling again, anyone from the public would like to speak on this matter, please raise your proverbial hand. Looks like another.
Uh, Jack Myers.
Hi, am I audible?
Yep.
Thank you. Um, so I'm rather disheartened to hear that the uh, the mayor and T M P are trying to um, or suggested rather that this uh change that we made in the park requirements in the previous uh uh zoning reform be reversed. Uh, I'm, I'm, I would like to echo the sentiments of everybody else who's spoken in favor of either keeping them or keeping a version of the reduced parking requirements that um encourages more development. I'm worried that bringing the old parking requirements back or creating uh too many rules regarding uh getting that special permit will stifle development, especially uh development from smaller investors. Um, I think if there's too many hoops to jump through, that'll kill off all of the um smaller projects that will help build up housing in a Norwalk and instead only allow the big developments that have, you know, millions and millions of dollars attached to it uh instead of, you know, smaller apartment buildings and things that can be managed by people that, you know, are local to Norwalk and uh live and work here. So I I would like to encourage you guys to either uh keep things the way they are now or to consider alternatives that are maybe not as restrictive or allow developers more freedom to uh bargain with the city, either through like a point system like we have in uh in East Norwalk or through some kind of like uh pay-per-parking space where they can uh reduce it. Uh, the, sorry, reduce the amount of parking required uh via a fine or something to try and make that a little bit easier and um free up developers to create more housing that we desperately need in Norwalk. Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Uh, again, anyone else wanting to speak on this topic, please raise your hand uh in Zoom. Going once, going twice. Buck be a lady, we're closing the hearing for the public portion of this. So back over to you, Steve, for any comments you wanted to uh make.
No, I don't have anything to add unless the commission had qu- questions of me.
Anyone from the commission have questions for Steve at this moment?
Um, that you could probably wait until we're in the like review and action piece, right? Because we're also able to discuss it there. Like, do we have a preference on doing that discussion now versus then?
No preference, Steve, doesn't matter.
Okay.
But you're cool.
Yeah, cool. I'll wait till we get there.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can, so Steve's the sort of applicant that we ask questions to at this point, is that?
In- indeed.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, Steve, if I missed this in your presentation of the proposed changes, but I was looking at the mayor's letter again and one of the things that he suggested was having the no parking requirements tied specifically to develops, developments that are all affordable housing or a certain level of affordable housing. Um, I don't think that's in the proposal. Was there a reason that that wasn't um uh kind of sketched out?
Brian, can you, I think, didn't we include that in the prior change? We had already put that in there with affordable housing development?
Yeah, so we did that with that uh, the change we did to increase density as part of um uh development that has at least fifty percent of the units. Uh, designated as affordable that they could continue to reduce the parking by up to fifty percent and that would not require a special permit. That would just be the typical permitting process.
And that's not superseded or, sorry, that supersedes, I mean, it doesn't, this does not counteract that.
Correct.
So they could reduce it by fifty percent, but they couldn't have um no parking requirements?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, and I think we, we heard from some developers at some point recently, I'm not sure if it was in the affordable housing discussions, that that um, that that reduced by fifty percent thing, that that sort of wasn't enough to spur affordable housing development. So I'm wondering if um bringing the minimum or the minimum to zero for the fifty percent affordable housing, housing would be something that would spur it on. I don't know the answer to that question, but.
Yeah, it it's, it's too hard to even give a firm answer one way or the other. Yeah, it's it's too hard to even give a firm answer one way or the other because that regulation is so new that you haven't seen anything. You haven't seen it work or not work yet. So I think it's just hard to answer right now.
You know, to, we we wrote that reg. We specifically ran that, the exact language by the Norwalk Housing Authority, and they were saying, yes, we can use this regulation. So I mean, maybe some folks doing other types of development might not be able to take advantage of it, but The Housing Authority can, but we could always continue to look at that reg and make tweaks in order to open up the pool of people who can use it.
I think we'll wait, any other question, burning questions now or can we wait to discussion? And we can wait to discussion. With that, I think that handles all our public parking or all our public commentary for tonight. Next, first now for review and action. First is the Steve, does it make sense to do the subdivision first or The project first?
I I don't think it matters. I would say do subdivision first and just get.
Okay, so we're going to do twenty twenty-five to sub I J group twenty-four Belden subdivision review and recommended action. I don't know if folks have want to bring up the memo or have questions for staff staff at this point, or if I actually can I get a motion? I think I think I need a motion, sorry.
Your motion, I I got on the Zoom.
Oh, wonderful.
I don't know, you want to continue or should we?
I'm happy to keep going or whatever you want. Your choice, Galen, do you want all yours?
Well, why don't you continue for a few of them and then I'll.
Okay. No worries. So let's.
It took turning my computer off and on.
Don't worry, I got it. You don't have to worry about it. I can write us, write us out here. So is there a motion for the subdivision?
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision.
Chapeau moves, it looks like Commissioner Rowena second, oh, sorry, Brian, go ahead.
Just before we get too far, just.
Oh, who's seated? For the subdivision is going to be. And it looked like Commissioner Rowena seconded. Can we bring up the memo or whatever, the resolution? Think this one's pretty straightforward, so. Anybody have questions come, questions, comments, concerns? See, seeing none, can we do a roll?
Oh, sure. Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski? Oh, I'm sorry, she wasn't seated, I apologize. Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
I believe yes. Ms. Langalis?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena? Yes, I believe. Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
What up, Stane?
Stane and Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Okay.
Passes?
Yes.
Thanks, Richard. Next is, hold on, I'm sorry, I'm on my small screen, so I'm just bouncing forth. Twenty twenty-four sixty-four Cam S P R I G group twenty-four Belden. I believe the only item left is the traffic conversation. Is that right, Steve?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Ben, Ben is here from T M P. Okay. If you have any questions.
Brian, Steve, did you have a, did you guys agree? How did you want us want to go about this?
Well, I I would say if you want to turn it over to Attorney Blank.
Okay, Attorney Blank, over to you.
And I I will, so I think we we submitted Responses to T M P, which you guys got as well. I think, I know, I know you kicked it to me first, but I think Ben has now had a chance to review those. And if there's, I'm not sure which ones maybe are in dispute or not, so I'd rather not Go point by point through our response on stuff that may waste time. And if Ben just lets us know which ones are An issue or or not, then I will go again if that's okay.
Awesome. Ben, I don't know if you're you're on, great.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. So my name is Ben Young, Senior Traffic Engineer with Norwalk T M P. So I was responsible for Reviewing the site plan on behalf of the department In the collaboration with my colleagues here in T M P. So Thank you. I I I'm aware of that. I issued the comment for twenty-four Belden on January seventeenth, which was Only shortly before the January twenty-second commission hearing. So We appreciate the opportunity to give both us and the applicant a little more time to respond and process our thoughts on this. So I want to start off by saying that We've recognized that T M P's authority in this site plan review is limited. And and tonight, we don't propose adding or changing any of the draft's conditions of approval That the P and C staff has drafted and is going to present to you tonight. So I'm here tonight just to provide some follow-up Commentary on the applicant's response to our memo. And yeah, we did receive that response on January twenty-ninth. So item number one, the first matter is the traffic impact study, which was prepared by the by DTS Providence. So we had had some concerns about the volumes that were being used, which were from some older traffic studies that T M P had collected and had provided to their traffic engineers just for reference with the caveat that They should be compared against new traffic counts, which we were collecting for our Wall Street redevelopment projects in the fall of twenty twenty-four. So in their response, a comparison table of volumes was provided to show that the counts are indeed roughly in the same order of magnitude As the as the previous previous counts that were collected. So while there's some notable differences for particular turning movements in the study area. None of them are particularly exacerbated or worsened by the traffic generated from the proposed development. So while we do wish to update certain volumes and geometries in the traffic model That had been created by the applicants' traffic engineer. We will not require that they do this as a condition of approval and will instead Just take the raw traffic model files ourselves for future in-house updates. So DTS Providence, they actually just provided those files to us today. So we're all set on that matter. Second, was to tackle the matter of loading deliveries and passenger pickup drop off from The various uses, residential, office, hotel, retail. So My knowledge of the future of the bus terminal on Burnell Boulevard, the the pulse point Is the same as what had been previously said by Attorney Blank and Mr. Tanner Thompson. So that said, the the frontage along Burnell Boulevard is important for the future to reserve for bus operations and throughput. And we definitely want to discourage any other types of vehicle activity stopping right in front Of there or the hotel lobby doors which are proposed at the corner of Burnell and Belden. So we did see the updated architectural plans Which were presented at the January twenty-second hearing and were subsequently submitted to the city. So one of the sheets shows a path of travel through the first level of the parking garage from Burnell. With various areas marked out for the pickup and drop off to the apartment lobby and the office hotel retail lobby. So while we acknowledge that this is feasible and certainly preferable To pick up drop off in the travel lanes on Burnell or or Belden, we do want to express our concern that Pickup drop off in the below ground garage of a development is not Typical without some amount of wayfinding signage From the street and and also some place making in the garage. So what I mean by that is Something like a series of signs from Burnell into the garage and around the loop of the garage telling, say, An Uber driver, for example, who might be coming to the site for the first time, that they should be Picking up their passenger in the garage. And and that may also mean making sure that the designated pickup drop off zones in the garage are actually Well lit, you know, have some level of signage and, you know, are free from, say, storage of Garage maintenance equipment that the building might be using. All this to say Is that the in garage pickup drop off scheme is acceptable, but The applicant should be thinking about ways to actually enforce its usage and Discourage pickup drop off on Burnell or, you know, double parking on Belden. Third, so the third part of our comments were about the applicants' Landscaping plans, which showed some new green space adjacent to some of the bus space for the transit district Along Burnell. So while we certainly appreciate the effort to reduce impermeable surfaces. There is an easement agreement in this space for the city and by extension, the transit district, which does have a condition for maintaining public access over the easement area. It it's important for us to, for the current and future transit hub to provide passenger waiting, circulation space As well as amenities such as bike parking. So the applicant agreed To this in their response memo to revise the landscaping plans to comply with the easement. So we're just looking to see that those revised plans are submitted. So finally, here's the meaty part. The the last part of our comments is the potential shortage of On-site parking associated with this development. So it is Timely and appropriate that this discussion is happening at the same time as the The minimum parking requirements changes are are up for discussion. Because twenty-four Belden does serve as a bit of a case study as to why We feel that the current regulations could be problematic. So it was clarified to us that there are to be seventy-seven parking spaces remaining in the proposed development. However, based on estimates that had been provided by the applicants' traffic engineer Using industry standard rates, we were looking at a potential peak parking demand on a weekday midday Exceeding the number of onsite spaces by one hundred and sixty-four vehicles. So even with the potential for shared parking with adjacent developments. We deemed that it was likely that some or or most of the overflow Could go to the Yankee Doodle Garage, the municipal garage just across Burnell. And we just, we demonstrated in our comments memo that this does indeed have the potential to Overwhelm the capacity of the municipal garage given its current occupancy. So We're particularly concerned about this because of the Wall Street redevelopment project that has kicked off and that the city Has invested twenty-seven million dollars into. This project is intended to revitalize retail occupancy in the area and Draw more visitors, not just within walking and biking distance. But from all around Norwalk and from the surrounding region, many of which will be driving in. So We believe that there is a lot of latent demand in the area, in the neighborhood for Future active parking use. By active, I mean Short-term hourly parking for visitors As opposed to, say, multi-day or long-term parking for for residents. So the Yankee Doodle Garage is a critical piece to providing that kind of capacity for the Wall Street neighborhood. And And in general, so T M P has been hearing from residents in various neighborhoods such as South Norwalk That they have daily stress from trying to find on-street parking. Or they have difficulty even just safely navigating their neighborhoods Either by car or on foot due to how heavily parked some of these streets are. So we are concerned That, you know, the lack, you know, or But yeah, the lack of a minimum parking requirement could exacerbate some of these issues in these neighborhoods. And You know, in general, T M P were not Entirely opposed to some of the things that others on this call have said. You know, we we definitely hear and want to promote You know, a livable city, which includes affordable housing, which includes multimodal transportation. So We just think that there are There's more work and research to be done. And I know that Others on the call may may disagree and that, you know, this is a crisis that needs to be solved immediately, but We, we want to make the commission aware that You know, what's What isn't measured, isn't managed, and that we have a potential for other crises to to pop up due to You know, due to not adequately or sufficiently studying The parking in, say, the Wall Street neighborhood or the South Norwalk neighborhood before this regulation was put in place. And I I'll add one other thing that It's, it's true, as several others have pointed out, that there are cities throughout the country that have abolished parking minimums, but That some of those Also do mandate that Developers have a T D M program or a transportation demand management program To help actually incentivize the mode shift from Car to walk bike transit. So T D M consists of, say, various potential strategies that developers could use or help fund To aid in that overall mission to to shift people's modes and reduce vehicular traffic And parking demand, you know, that might consist of additional bike parking or or showers in offices to Incentivize bike commuting, things like that. So You know, the The fee in lieu of parking, that's good. I just want to make the commissioners aware of, you know, another potential tool In the toolbox that could be utilized and, you know, could help Bridge Some of the, you know, it creates some sort of compromise maybe between What's what we're looking for and what some others on this call are looking for, so.
And one question, I I've heard a lot tonight about what Yankee Doodle's capacity is and how it's being used As a leasing field a little bit. Can you tell me like, what's the facts there? Like, do we lease part of Yankee Doodle out for car storage?
Yeah, so it's true. Currently, we do lease. So there's, there's two big things. There's some space blocked off on top for police usage, about twenty-something spaces. And there's a A good number of spaces that are reserved for McMahon Ford. Which is at the corner of, you know, it's a car dealership at the corner of Burnell and Main. However, You know, in the future, as.
Do you have a sense of how many?
It's hundred and fifteen for Ford McMahon. So. But so the total capacity minus the police spaces was is three hundred and seventy-nine. So With with the Ford McMahon, which, you know, could potentially Be removed if we, you know, move to A paradigm where we we have a lot more retail parking demand. But but currently, we have, say, a hundred and eighty to two hundred and forty spaces occupied Of that three seventy-nine throughout the day. With potential overflow from twenty-four Belden, that would be near or at capacity. You know, depending on, yeah.
The Ford dealer is on a thirty-day Lease situation, right? So that can be changed anytime you need to. That relationship can change.
Yeah, I I have to admit, I'm not totally aware of what the exact lease agreement is with Ford, but I'm I'm sure that there is, you know, potential for change there.
Yeah, it's a thirty-day.
Okay.
You know, month to month.
Yeah.
I guess.
Really a big problem.
Steve, I'm just trying to figure out the best way here to navigate. So Ben gave his piece, I guess.
So, yeah, I mean.
Adam can respond in line?
Yeah, it's, it's keeping in mind, it's not a public hearing, it's
I know, so I wanna.
You go try to keep it brief for you, Nick.
Thank you.
Sorry.
But Ben finished, you finished, right?
Yeah, so
Okay.
Basically, essentially, what I'm providing here is just food for thought for the commission and yeah, we just wanted to clarify some of our points from our, from our memo and give our final feedback on the response from the applicant. So.
Thank you so much, Ben.
Yeah.
And I just, I'll give two thoughts and then we'll let Jason say his piece, but my, just the two things. One, one is obviously, I think Ben started it by saying he didn't, he was comfortable with the conditions proposed by staff in your proposed approval. So, which, which we are as well. So there's not much to sort of fight about. But, but I will say just sort of substantively, you know, maybe it was seventy two or seventy five spaces in, in one of the garages under the building with it, there's a shared parking agreement for two hundred and six other spaces that we're potentially renegotiating now. And, you know, I can assure you and Jason will confirm that, you know, if it was only seventy five spaces available for the hotel, the apartments, the office and the retail, this project is not being built. It's just not, there's no, nobody's gonna join in the development efforts and nobody's gonna fund it with that kind of parking. There will be sufficient parking. It's just great that your reg gives us the flexibility of working that out on the fly and it doesn't have to be a recorded twenty year lease. It can be offsite, it can be onsite. You can kind of work arrangements with those that are underutilizing other properties or other properties that Mr. Milligan owns. So, so I hope you'll approve it and I'll maybe Jason, let Jason say his piece.
My turn?
Yes, sir.
So I'm glad that Ben admitted that this project was what made them nervous and we can have a rational conversation about it because Adam did point out there is a shared parking agreement and I'm very happy that I'm not talking to you all about it. It's a private agreement. It's, it was written a long time ago. I don't like it. And I'm glad I have the, the ability to discuss it privately like it belongs. But there's six hundred cars I think could fit on that site and Avalon barely uses the, the parking during the day. They have a dentist and a McDonald's. So during the day, there's, you don't see it, but underground, two levels, there is a lot of underutilized parking. So while there's speculation that we may overrun Yankee Doodle, I, I mean, that would be wonderful if we did. That would mean there's people down there for the first time in, in a century. But I also went across the street. There's a courthouse that doesn't have parking, all the churches, like Adam said. So I, I again say, this is a project in front of you. I am talking to several people. They would reduce the retail and would add parking. So you can park on the retail level, but I'm glad we don't have to make that decision now since there's so many, a variety of uses and this thing's been vacant, largely vacant for twenty years. You know, it gives us flexibility to see which uses are best and that may change over time. So you know, maximum flexibility, especially when we have all this capacity is what we deserve. You know, maybes and could be, and if we got fully subscribed in three years from now, then maybe Yankee Doodle might have some people needing spaces. That's not enough to turn the ship around. Let, let the, 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 the parking exemption play out a bit more. And I've said my piece on that, but I appreciate your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Milligan. With that, I think I'm ready to entertain a motion. Galen, are you motioning to approve? Yes.
Yeah.
Do I have a second? Oh, and we'll be seating Diana for this one. Do I have a second?
Nick, before you get the second, can you just, or you or Steve, just review exactly what it is we're voting on? Cause now I feel like we've gone back and forth on a bunch of things. I just want to be
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, Brian will pull up the resolution. You're fighting, you're fighting, voting on the site plan application for twenty four Belden.
Okay.
I'll second.
Commissioner Williams seconds. So now we can review the the memo here and the, remember also, this is a site plan review, not a special permit. So should be pretty straightforward.
Nick, if I can follow up on Anna's question, this resolution doesn't have to do with the parking issues that we just been talking about for the last half hour, does it?
This resolution is not directly amending the parking changes, though that, that'll happen next. I think that's the next thing on our item. This is only to approve the project at twenty four Belden or deny it. This was the reason to the three buildings or two new buildings.
I, I know what it is.
Okay, great. Yep.
Wasn't clear where the parking issue came in or didn't.
It's, it's a
This application is based off of the prior regs.
This, this application is based off of the regs that we are under today, which do not have parking requirements.
Okay, all right, good. That's, that's what I
And Steve and Brian, question me or correct me if I'm wrong here or saying anything.
You're right. Yeah. As far as the zoning regs are concerned, the application is compliant.
And to maybe further clarify that the reason we just had that discussion was because the TMP letter came in later, we wanted to make sure there was time to have that discussion and that's why we just had that component, right?
Yeah, if you remember at the last meeting, Chair Wells had asked just that there'd be some clarification on the parking based on TMP's memo and then the, the, a little bit of the traffic discussion.
I, I Remember all of that. So we're voting on this based on the present
Regulations. Yes, sir.
What happens next, I guess, is what I'm asking.
It was so, were we to approve what's then, what we just reviewed, the other item that pertains to the parking regulations? You know, this application wouldn't be subjected to that.
Right.
Correct.
Because it's been approved.
Developments. Regulations.
Thank you.
Do folks have any?
Brian, can you make that just a bit larger? Thank you.
This is just a text that heard BFJ's architectural peer review, which the applicant has, if not already addressed, said that they, they will comply with.
Did BFJ also address the, or share the concern that TMP had around wayfinding for drop off and pickup?
Let's see, I believe it was included within the site.
Eight?
No, is it eight?
It's close to those, but I think it's slightly different. So maybe that's something we look at as a separate condition. If folks are amenable to that.
Sounds good to me.
I would imagine that if it's a hotel, the hotel has its own best interest in making sure that people know where it is.
Agreed. Although my intention was specifically to the wayfinding for the pickup and drop off for like Ubers and deliveries and things like that.
I don't know if you want to add it to one of them or make a new one. Detailing pickup. Or, and including like enhanced, not only enhanced waste finding, but including wayfinding. Blah, blah, blah. Legal, legal, legal.
That's not covered under E.
It, it could be within an operations plan. Brian, Steve, I, I don't know if you find that to be sufficient.
Yeah, we could, that was probably cleaner.
You can just put including wayfinding signage into that sentence, probably to emphasize that.
There she goes. Anybody have comments, questions, concerns at this point? Or before we move to a vote, anybody want to make any comments?
And then just confirming Galen made the motion.
And, uh, Galen made the motion, Mr. Williams made the second.
Just confirming that Galen and, and Darius, that you're okay with the resolution as amended?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
I'll make one comment before the vote. And I said this before with this project, you know, we talk about affordable housing all the time and there's capital A and lowercase a affordable housing. And I think this is a good example of lowercase a affordable housing that it's market driven. It's, I think, really going to add to the area that's blighted for God knows how long. And I, I think it meets everything that we wanted to happen down there. So I think it's a good project, but that's my opinion. With that, can we go to a roll?
Sure.
Diana's seated.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron? Yes?
You're muted.
Yes.
So thank you. Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
And Mr. Cantor?
Yes. With that, it's unanimous vote in the affirmative. Thank you, Attorney Blank.
Thank you.
Mr. Milligan? You guys have a wonderful, or I guess anyone's, Adam may be staying on because the next one, I think is Adam's, right?
Yeah, it's Richard's, correct.
I don't get to talk though.
Oh, you don't get to talk. So I know, I think, Richard, you normally recuse yourself for there. So the next one on the agenda is, Richards is twenty seven thirty one thirty five Richards Avenue, the Vona Project. We're gonna, I think we just have to, what was the leftover point there?
So we were figuring out the, the cost of the installation of the crosswalk, RF, RRFB and the ramps. So I think we had modified some language for you guys to take a look at.
Okay. So should we motion to approve and then look at it or look at it first?
Why, why don't we look at it, look at it first? It's gonna be driven by the cost.
Then let's look at it. And, uh, Richard?
Well, maybe we should be the developer if they're willing to do it.
Yeah, we had, so we, they can't speak, but we had, we had spoken to them prior to the, the close of the hearing. They were willing to do the, the ramps and the crosswalk, but the, the beacon, they, they did not not agree to do. So we drafted language that hopefully maybe a convoluted way to say that they'll do the, the crosswalk and the ramps. Since the, the beacon isn't included in it, what we wanted to just make sure is that for whatever reason, you know, if the, the, the ramps don't get installed at the crosswalk, if the city decides for whatever reason not to, that they don't want the applicant to install those, that that, that any fund could get returned back to the applicant, which would have been in the form of their bond that they could submit.
Brian, you were gonna find out what the cost of that beacon was.
Yes, Steve, Steve might have that.
Yeah. So the, the beacon piece itself is about twenty five thousand dollars, probably maybe a little more. And then the crosswalk, neither is the estimate that we got there, crosswalk and the ramp piece was about seventy five.
Seventy five hundred thousand?
Thousand, sorry. So in total, the whole, the whole cost with the, the beacon plus the other, the crosswalk and the ramps was about a hundred thousand.
But just the, just the, the thing that was already nominally agreed to was the ramp and that seventy five thousand, right? So the, the, the real question was that additional twenty five thousand of the beacon, right?
Correct.
Okay. I don't know what folks feel about that.
Yeah, I'm concerned with the road geometry there because it does kind of bend that without like some sort of signal that someone is currently crossing, that that could lead to a, a dangerous outcome. I wonder if there's an option where they can put the seventy five into a bond and when the city can find the
Well, there's no issue with the, this, oh, you're saying you have concerns with putting
Crossing in without the, yeah, without
We really, I mean, it's twenty five K at the end of the day, like
Yeah.
Each of these are gonna be what?
Yeah, we kind of worded it too, I think, to meet what Mr. Bryce was saying is that, so A, saying sure the city determined that the installation of the concrete ramps adds and crosswalk be done at a later date that we can bond, collect a bond from the applicant and then city can come up with the rest of the funding and then get it installed, essentially like call their bonds to do it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that, that addresses my concern. I was worried about not having a way to like signal that somebody's crossing or especially like the, the idea being that there's gonna be more like elderly folks living at this area, right? And the road geometry there does have a couple of like corners. It's like a slight S shape. So I just worry about visibility if someone's coming around the corner there.
Yeah, I think the open question is, do people, does, does anyone or the collective feel strongly to put the beacon in the package of having the applicant pay for that? That's the, that's the question on the table, I believe.
Okay.
Nick, a couple of comments if I may.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. This is, this development is relatively small compared to the Carriage House, Mallard's Landing and that other apartment building that I don't know the name of that are to the south, going toward the corner of Richards Avenue and Route One. And I think
Tammy, we lose Tammy?
I think so.
Seems so, yeah.
All gods are totally out of control.
Out to get us. Okay, let's, she was mid-sentence. So I think, I think in all fairness, we should wait a minute and see if she joins back.
I think Darius put it, Darius, do you want to?
Yeah, I, I was just going to say that I believe that the, the two should go together. You know, we shouldn't have one without the other because if we encourage the installation of the ramp, then that's going to encourage more traffic. And so without having one without the other, we could just be leading people into an issue possibly.
Sorry, my other computer battery died and my charger doesn't seem to be working. Sorry.
Yeah, hold on, hold on one second, Tammy. Darius was mid, mid-sentence there. Oh. So, no, no, don't apologize. I mean.
No, I was just bummed.
You were, so, so, so Darius, you're saying you think it's a package deal? Are you suggesting then that that package deal should be asked by the developer to do? Or are you saying you're happy with it being a package deal being split in the way that it is laid out here?
Both.
No, that's not an, that's not a choice. So, so said differently, you're happy either, sorry, sorry. Let me rephrase that. I guess that can be an answer. You're happy either way. You don't really, you don't, so you don't feel strongly for the beacon? Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Langgallis, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, my battery died on my other
Last we heard was Mallard's, so we were hoping we weren't attacked by a pack of ducks coming at you.
Mallard's Landing. No, but I feel that maybe there should be some type of crosswalk for the people that live in all of those very large developments, hundreds of units rather than UHA's Street or the development under, you know, under our under, you know, under our review right now, and I, I don't think, um, you know, I'm one of the biggest sidewalk fans, but I feel like TMP is holding this development hostage over this, and I, I don't feel that that's appropriate when there are three much larger developments right down the street, and then you also have the Alzheimer's care place in between, and yes, senior citizens, they're, most of the people that are live there are probably going to drive out onto the street, they're not going to walk to Home Goods and the new Target that's going in where Walmart was, but if our only choice is to split it, or if that's one of the two choices, I would vote in favor of splitting it. Um, but I don't think it's really appropriate.
That's how it's written right now.
Yes, so I know we can't change that, so
No, we can.
My feeling about it, and I drive by there all the time, so I'm
We can amend this, this, we're in the point of the conversation of, we can change this if you feel strongly or if others agree with that change. It sounds like that there's a consensus around splitting it.
That they would put in the ramps and the crosswalks.
They did already, yep, that's right.
So, that's what's in the, in it in the approval now, and so I would vote to just leave it as it is and vote to approve it as it is, as it's written. Because that's already been negotiated, that's already been agreed to.
Seems like folks are generally amenable to this. Hard to see, I can't see everyone at the same time, so general nods or thumbs up would be appreciated here. Or scream that you're not, and we're, or here, generally like, okay, so I'm seeing thumbs up, I'm seeing nods.
To specifically what was
Question is, what is before us is what we're going to vote on?
I'm in.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so it seems roughly, we're good to go. Um, so for this project, Anna, you're back, but Anna, I believe you had a step away, so I think you feel no for voting right now?
Yes.
Okay, great, so we're going to do, um Diana then, and then I think is everyone else seated, or Richard, Richard, you normally, do you recuse for?
Yeah, you asked that before, I don't know why you would ask me that.
It's your street, it's your street, Richard, that's why.
I missed.
Richards Avenue.
I thought, I thought, I thought last time you left for the project, I, when this came up.
No, I think that was unrelated.
No, that was unrelated, I'm sorry, I thought you refused yourself this previously, so I'm losing my mind. Uh, never mind them, um, okay. Uh, so Diana will be seated, I think we, I need a motion to approve.
I'll move.
David moves, is there a second? Looks like Richard raised his hand for a second, uh, Commissioner Rowena. Uh, this is what was just up, folks can look at this one more time.
Sorry, I can't really see this on my screen, is it the whole proposal is, or is it just about the crosswalk?
It's the whole proposal.
Okay, so if you were, if one were to vote against it, that would be voting against the project.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, I'm sorry, I can't
This includes that the applicant is, has agreed to install the the ramps, the pads and the crosswalk. They have not agreed to install the, the beacon. Um, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Right. Um, I think we can go to roll.
Okay.
And again, Diana's going to be seated.
Sure, I'll start with Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
And Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yay, more homes. Um, thank you, Attorney Blank. Next on the agenda, I believe, is the parking changes, if I can find my tab, if I have that right, yep. Uh, twenty twenty five Norwalk Planning Zone Commission zoning regulations text minute on parking. Questions for staff?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so when we talked about this at our last meeting, you know, one of the things that I was furious about, and it also came up in um comments tonight was what we can do for smaller projects um, to um, you know, make sure that we're not, a- as I guess, um, folks testified tonight, um, we're not stifling smaller projects that um, maybe aren't able to like build the, the missing middle housing, right, the, the townhouses, the um, smaller developments, um. Is there anything that um, we could do in that regard?
I, I mean, not so much as it relates to the, the, the kind of the main thrust of that proposal, I, well particularly what I'm referencing is the CD four zone, because for the, by and large if, if you think about what the intent of combining those zones into the CD four zone was meant to do was really to say and this is backed up in the citywide plan, is this is where we really want to see the most event, dense development in the city. So the likelihood of getting that you know, two to four, six, eight unit housing there is a lot less likely, um, than you would otherwise see in, you know, surrounding areas that are, allow the, you know less dense development. Um, where it might come into play, you, you know, you have properties like where a couple of the speakers spoke, Elizabeth Street and Hanford Street. But there's, those are also, a lot of those are, you know, can also be considered historic buildings perhaps, and they might have some different um, options in terms of parking exemptions, so that's something we could look at, but I think to the one thing I have heard I don't know if I've seen any evidence or data to support it, though, is to say that in other areas where we're having smaller developments outside of the, the, you know, more dense areas is there's concern about parking overflow or parking on the streets and what that's exactly related to, what the root cause of that, I don't think we've kind of determined what that is based on, you know, there hasn't been a project approved with no parking, so I just can't say that's the case, um. Were there issues because we dropped those developments down to one point three spaces per unit, and maybe that's not the right standard? I think that's a more appropriate conversation to have and, and something to evaluate, but I can't say it's, it's anything directly related to any of the rules that have been changed.
Okay. Um, one of the other things that came up was about the, the special permit um uh, conditions and um, you know one of the things that was raised was that, you know, developers aren't going to uh, want to take us up on the special permit, um. And um, yeah, I, I, um, you know, in that testimony, you know, one of the things that came up was the twenty thousand um, per space, so I, I wasn't sure that, you know, for um, like, I, I liked um, the suggestion of um, having like a fee and move, for example, to um, to peg to inflation, um, and to revisit it as we discussed earlier. Um, I wonder if that's a number that should um, be variable based on like the size of the development? I, I'm not sure if that's something other cities have explored, but um, maybe feels like a way to um, like not uh, financially dissuade like smaller developers from taking us up on the um, special permit considerations there. But it's, seems like maybe some of the other conditions on the special permit um, are the concern of like why somebody may not want to bring that in front of us.
Yeah, and I can pull those up again if you want to review them, but I would say anytime you require a special permit, you're adding a level of uncertainty to an application, so, because, because all the existing special permit criteria, there's, for the most part, there's kind of wiggle room and a little bit of gray which I, you know, sometimes it's not good, for the most part, I think having very certain specifications and criteria in the regulations is the best way to go, because that's, that gives somebody certainty on what they can or can't do. Sometimes, though, for certain kinds of applications and developments where you're not hundred percent sure of what the impacts might be, and you want to look at them on a case by case basis. That special permit language being a little less clear gives you, um, I think gives you wiggle room and gives you authority to say yes or no based on a project by project basis, whereas opposed to a site plan, it is, all right, it complies with X, Y, and Z, and so you're kind of bound to approve at that point, so I don't know if that additional language is more of a hindrance or not, um. We haven't seen anybody come in and request it yet, so like a lot of these things were, were kind of you know, trial by error basis at this point. I think the other thing too with the the, the amount for space, I think, you know, for my recommendation would be to, would be to, you know, work off of that tonight. I think staff, you know a lot of that's driven by the fact that these regulations are by and large are very brand new and you know, still seeing what works and doesn't work and doesn't make sense. Evalue it in six months, we're all, we're always looking to make edits here and there to, to the language, to make the language more user friendly and more concise, so that's not something we're adverse to looking at and researching further.
Yeah, no, I, I'd appreciate that, I think that'd be a good, a good thing to look at.
Um, we have, we have um, certain political pressure um uh, from the mayor's office, from uh, TMP um, to change these regulations, and we, we have a certain amount of pressure from uh, others um, not to change the regulations. Um, is um, there any strong reason at this particular point in time to change the regulations? Or is that something that we could say? Let's give it more thought, let's revisit it in three months. Um, let's talk about it a little more, let's do a little more research.
Well, I, I would say that, you know based on, you know, and this was in, in the mayor's memo, and I think it makes sense is you know, it would be good if there was a joint parking study done between TNP and PNZ, looking at uh, not only just what the existing capacity is, but where the issues are and trying to figure out why these issues are occurring and where, so that way we can figure out if, if the rules that we have in place are perpetuating a problem, if, is there is an actual problem, or is there enough capacity in the system to loosen up the regulations back to where they were, so I think you know in a perfect world, that probably would have been done before that blanket exemption was put in, but it wasn't, you know the, while we had a pretty generous budget to do the zoning regulations, we didn't have a budget to do uh, complete traffic study of every street in the city, we didn't have the ability to look at all these aspects that might have informed every decision that you made, so I think now we're just kind of um, retrofitting some of these changes in and looking at ways to at least make sure there aren't any problems before they get out of hand, so I, I would say maybe the parking study would be something if we could kind of, I know, and the tricky part of that is budgets are tight, so trying to get funding for that right away might not be the easiest thing as well, but that, that would be the approach that I would recommend.
But if it's a priority for the um, um, the, the mayor one would think uh, he would work to get the money in the budget to do the study.
Yeah, and I don't believe I'd have to go back and look at all the uh, capital requests again, I don't recall seeing that in there, but you know, we're, nothing's been finalized yet, you know, the rec, some of the recommendations are starting to filter out, but but nothing's been voted on, so I, I, I'd say based on your comments tonight, if the other commissioners are of a like mind, that might be something you might want to bring to the mayor's attention sooner rather than later.
I would support that, yeah. Yeah, if I agree, I didn't see that. Oh, say it again, Nick?
I'm saying we can put that in a resolution here, right? In the in this way, or what's the best pattern for, path for that, Steve?
Yeah, you could put that language as like a whereas clause, something like that in the resolution, it wouldn't, you know, it's not a condition because it's
Yeah, sorry, not a condition.
Yeah, or, or you can just say, hey, we'd like to write a separate memo to the mayor based on the conversation tonight, that might be another, maybe a cleaner approach to doing it.
I'm sorry, is the proposal to not change anything until we see the results of the study, or to do these changes and then see the results of this study?
The proposal is make the changes, do the study, amend after the study.
If they're, if amending is appropriate.
If amending is appropriate.
If amending is appropriate, and we haven't had any negative outcomes from the change that was made in February as of yet. Correct, other than these two letters?
Nope, we haven't had an application to date within, uh, with somebody proposing no parking.
And we haven't okay.
I just
I am
Like, we've seen seventy one, like, for example, seventy one Water Street, which is before you guys is an application, they're technically parked at it might be like point nine five spaces per unit instead of one space per unit. Um, yeah.
And the the application just now was, was one going off these new regulations.
Yeah, so It's a little trickier, that one, just because they had the parking was already there, so it's not like they didn't have, it, it's, it's not like they had a virgin site where they came in and developed that, that, the existing spaces that are underground for the um, for the project.
Office building already there, but we didn't have, we didn't hear in public comment people other than TMP saying we don't think the proposal has enough
Well, that, that was a site plan, and we did not opt for public.
Yeah, there was no
So there was no public hearing for that.
Yeah, so it got a little confusing because people were speaking about the uh, the subdivision, we're talking about the project. Then you had part of the project, people were talking about the no parking exemption hearing, so I think we had three conversations in, you know, going on for separate hearings.
And I had three more in my head going anyway, so like the voices are talking, sorry, Commissioner Ruin, I think you were about to say something?
Yeah, I, I was just um, thinking to myself when I was listening to um Attorney Blank and Mr. Milligan. Um, it reminded me of a, a project that I was involved in a million years ago down in Greenwich. Um, where an owner of a large commercial um, operation that required a lot of parking also owned a bunch of buildings in the area, and it was kind of cutting edge at the time that he was able to utilize um, easements and recorded uh, leases between his various property entity ownerships to provide the parking for this commercial enterprise that he was involved in. And I bring this up because um Jason Milligan is obviously heavily invested in Wall Street and um he has the ability, if he wants to uh, to have parking provided in his various properties for various other things. Um, I've spent a lot of time on Wall Street lately at some of the, the restaurants that are down there. And um, I've never had an issue parking, I've been there Sunday morning, Friday night, Thursday afternoons, and you know, it, it just, you know, of course, there's not the new developments down there yet, but it seems like there's a lot of parking on the street and um, and then the parking garages half full of not residents, so that's just a thought.
You know, I was, I was not thrilled with how uh, the how the change from last year got put in sort of at the last minute, I didn't feel like there was a real opportunity for the public to, to weigh in, the suggestion sort of came out of the public and then we adopted it. But what people were weighing in on was the draft regulations that didn't have this no parking in the four zone in there, but I feel like we now had a public hearing tonight on um, on making a change, and we didn't I don't think I heard anybody saying, and we certainly didn't get any write-in saying, and I'm particularly interested in the business community downtown saying, yes, please make these changes because we're really afraid that this no parking requirement is going to hurt um, our business, you know, we hear all the time that the parking meters hurt businesses or whatever. We haven't heard anybody saying making this change is really important. And I know we heard a lot of people saying, don't make the change, but I, I, I'm more interested in like, is there constituency that really wants this change? Other than TMP and the mayor?
Well, yeah, you, you've heard the public comment tonight, but you did, I mean, there's a lot of you know, take it for what it's worth, there's always a lot of online scuttlebutt about the lack of parking and how that's creeped into all other neighborhoods outside.
Yeah, other neighbor, like more of the residential issue.
Yeah, it, it's, it, you know, all, all honesty, it's difficult to say exactly what that stems from, assuming that, that they're correct on those things, whether, whether it's from projects like these being built, or it's from ten other factors that might be going on, whether people have more individuals residing in their homes than they used to, you know, kids staying longer, you know, having more cars. More individuals residing in their homes than they used to, you know, kids staying longer, you know, having more cars, you know, a lot of those older homes were. Like we had the conversation with the, going to the two family housing, you know, the, some of those houses were built with. Very tiny driveways and almost no parking and, you know, they, now they have. Three or four cars where. Forty years ago, there was one or two, so there, there's lots of factors that go into that.
I'm, I'm, I'm very attuned to those concerns. Uh, given where I live, but I. I don't see those concerns as being related to the district for the zone. Four parts that we're talking about as much as. The neighborhoods and like Richard, I've been spending a lot of time on Wall Street and Washington Street. Parking is so easy, it almost um. It almost feels like I should, you know, like it almost feels wrong that it's so easy. Downtown and it's wonderful and I love it. I, I don't think it should be bad. Um, I'm just saying that, that. It doesn't seem like that's a. I don't see the problem. I wasn't a fan of this change, but I'm not seeing the problem with the change having been made. So um. I, I would be interested in seeing a study. I think it would have been better to see a study before making wholesale changes, but given that we made the change. And there haven't been concrete problems yet. I personally would say. Please fund this study if you're concerned about this so that we can make some changes based on the study. But like, there's no need to make the change today.
I think T M P might, might have highlighted some. Problems as well. But go ahead, Tammy.
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm kind of, I agree um, with what Anna is saying and. I've lived in Norwalk, I think for thirty three years and. I'm still waiting for Wall Street to get better. Um, it hasn't really changed significantly and I give Mr. Milligan a lot of credit for trying and trying and trying. And over the years, and I hope he succeeds and. Over the years, there have been issues with the city selling parking places down there and then you hear that our garage is being leased a hundred and. Whatever it was spaces to. The car dealership, but yet they're worried there isn't enough parking. It, like, who are they for? I mean, obviously the Ford dealership is a business and we want them to be successful. But one thing that is different between Washington Street and Wall Street. Washington Street is wall to wall restaurants and it's a restaurant destination. People come from out of town to go there. And they do seem to find parking even though it's old part of town and it doesn't look like there's much parking, but they do. And Wall Street is, if it ever gets completely redeveloped, is more of a mix. There is a lot more residential down there, but. We don't know yet. Whether there's going to be a parking problem because those developments aren't finalized. So. I, I think. You should study it once. T M P is redoing the intersection there by the library, the Isaac Street um, properties are coming online. Pretty soon. You need to study it. Kind of after it's done. Jason has plenty of parking in his buildings, it seems, so. I would, I would wait.
The other way to think about it, Tammy, is. Oh, go ahead, Galen.
No, no, I was just gonna say, if we put the parking. Requirements back in. And do the study, we prevent a problem from happening, for lack of parking, you know, that. You know, you say a problem hasn't happened yet for lack of parking, let's wait. But saying let's wait. For a problem to happen.
Let's wait and see if a problem happens. That is, is more what I'm saying.
But if a problem does happen, then we've waited, then we have a problem. You know, whereas if we put the parking regulations back in. Which are not really onerous, they're just one space, you know, it's less than was there before. And then we do a study, if the study comes up and says, no, we really don't need these. Regulations, we could take them back off. But we don't. End up with no parking requirement and then ending up having a problem. And this, you know, Wall Street. Is a very sensitive area. You don't wanna. That's a place we can't afford to have any problems.
I don't think there's any incentive to do the study. If we change the regulations.
Well, that could be.
I did, I. I disagree. I think either way, we would still need to do the study because. We, we're still, as a city, we, our traffic issues. Our parking issues really just aren't in sync. And you know, we're a collection of neighborhoods. And that has real life effects to this day and they're going to continue to happen as Norwalk continues to grow. I completely agree with Galen's point, you know, we don't want to sit around waiting for a problem to happen and then we're ending up in a lawsuit. You know, I, and I've always supported a uh, reduction in parking. Minimums because I do believe that we should try to meet. People's needs wherever they are, so more people want to have. Uh, access to bikes, then we should have more bike lanes, but also people want to have. Option of having a car and they should be able to have that option as well. So it's about trying to meet the needs of as many people as we serve.
So I'm having a hard time figuring out what this study is going to study if it hasn't become a problem yet. I mean, we're looking into the future with a lot of what ifs. So I, I am in favor of making the changes now and then. Doing the study and being open to making changes as we see problems crop up before they get out of hand and out in front of us.
Stephen, Brian, could you go in maybe a little bit of what the study would? Include or what it would address?
Hold on one second.
Oh, yeah.
Before you go there, just Diana, just make sure I understand what you're, I hear you saying you're in favor of is go bringing back the requirements as laid out by staff.
Yes.
Having the study and then reiterating on that. Okay, cool. Just wanted to make sure I was under, I was following you correctly.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the.
Regulations are less. Requiring less parking than the previous. Zoning required, right, Steve?
Yeah, with, with some of the um, abilities that would, some of the reductions we put in, it, it, it equates to like the, almost the ratio, Brian. It was around a space per unit. Depending on the, the number of units.
And it previously was what, like one point three or one point five?
Yeah, you, you can, you know, even with the uh, with the workforce housing. Changes that were there, you can get down to one per unit. So there's avenues for somebody to do that.
But the previous. Before the changes we made was about one, one point three, one point five per, so the, the changes we're making tonight. Are increasing what they were after the change, but still decreasing from what the zoning regs were. On the books for whatever, ten thousand years.
Yeah, it's, it's. It will, the, the, this. Typical standard is one point three per year.
And folks have any other questions or comments or wanting to debate further? I know this is a, this is a tricky. A tricky one.
Um, one question I had was, um, I think in regards to some of the testimony we heard was that like developers won't come forward with projects. Um, because they'll, they'll take the other route, right? The site plan route, for example, um, if the, the parking requirements are too onerous, um. Do we, do we see developers like come in uh, and say like, hey, like I really want to build, you know, project X? Um, but you know, for example, the parking regulation is too restrictive, um, you know, could we, you know, see about a tax amendment, right? Is that something we see developers coming in to like have those conversations or um, do you think that that dies at the drawing board?
Um, I, I. Not necessarily always related to parking, but we do get. Comments about certain. And it's sometimes it's about, uh, I, I don't want to mention the particular neighborhood, but they were saying we, we might avoid doing a special permit because of, we just know. The neighborhood's going to fight us. First special permit versus site plan, so is it worth the extra effort to, to do that, which is a shame, but we do get the, the concern about. Um, you know, it could, most of the time though, your density in the C D four, I don't think the density in the C D four is a problem. I mean, you're, you're pretty. Compared to what it used to be, it's, it's, you know, look at the projects that have been built since we went to one to five hundred. In South Norwalk, it's been a, a big change. So I don't think that is much, some of the other zones. It. Now, you know what? That, that piece of it, the density piece, I'm not. Buying an argument on that one, at least, you know, look, if you lower the density, sure, it makes every. Project more viable and more attractive, but you know, I, I, I don't think that particular number we have at the moment is, is a problem.
Okay, any other? Comments, questions? Concerns?
Maybe we can move to a vote.
I was gonna say, oh, we need a motion first. Darius motions, is there a second? Oh, and I'll be seating Diana for this one.
Motion for approval, correct?
There's.
I moved, now we need a second.
But there is, Brian was clarifying, you are motioning to approve the changes of, before you and Galen seconds that. Okay.
You guys see the resolution? I just want to make sure I got the right document.
No, you have to text up.
Oh, we're at the text.
Not on my screen, I don't, but hold on.
Well. Don't show us everything on your screen, please.
I'll try not to.
I believe uh. Commissioner Bryce asked or Lou or so, everyone effectively has asked, well, I guess we said we wanted to, a memo going back. For funding for the study or whatever that is, Steve, do we need to put that in here or is that just a takeaway for you?
I think we could, it's probably easier to leave it separate.
Okay, let's leave it separate then.
Yeah, and I can work with uh, Ms. Wells on putting some language together.
Right.
The, the resolution doesn't have any conditions or anything tied to, it's just referencing.
Um, I guess with that, we'll go to a vote.
I'll start with uh, Ms. Jordan Byron. J J, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Yes, I'm sorry, I was, I was on mute.
Oh, is, are you uh? What, are you in favor or opposed?
In favor.
In favor. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
No.
Mr. Rowena?
No.
Mr. Schulman?
You know, I'm in favor of a lot that's in that motion. Um, and I also, I want to make it clear that I was not uh, implying that the study is not necessary. I was simply saying, I don't think the study will go forward. Uh, if we adopt um. These new regulations now. So I'm going to vote against.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
I don't know, um. I think the language is, is. Close to something I would be comfortable approving, but I think there's a little bit I'd like to see tweaked on the special permit, so I'm, I'm gonna go now.
And Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that was five, four. Uh, she's not seated for this one. Nikki, you there? You look frozen.
Uh, I'm here. My soul is frozen, but that's a different conversation.
There was five, four passes, is that right?
Correct, at least if I had to count correct, I think so.
It passes.
Okay. Okay.
Moving on. Is the acceptance of minutes?
Yeah.
All in favor, we can do that with a show of hands. Thank you, Tammy, for motion. Forgot about that. All in favor, thumbs up.
Yep.
I'll abstain, I wasn't at the end of the meeting.
Great, next is comments of the director.
Um. Just a couple of quick things we have um. Some more edits coming up for your consideration. I know that we've been also. Talking with other people about little tweaks, I think. You know, I, I think the regulations themselves will be a revolving process as we go forward. We spent a lot of time talking about. Two family dwellings and what they're going to look like when they're done. So we've been. Having a lot of different meetings with. Uh, different developers about the two families and the different ways to. Implement the regulations. When we put those changes in, you remember we gave them two options, one if you had the rear facing garages and one if you had the street facing garages. Seems to be a lot of um. Desire to do the street facing garages, so I really want to see what they look like when they're done. And so we can see if what we put together works or not, or otherwise we might have to. You know, look at that again or scrap that whole idea and just make them all put rear facing garages on there, so I'd be curious to see how they come out. We, there were some. Developments built up on Aiken Street and I forgot the number. There were a bunch of two families built up there. They're fairly new. And those came out pretty nice and then, but we've seen some other ones. A little older vintage where it's just too much asphalt on the front and that's what we're trying to avoid, so. Curious to see how people. Actually build these and, and when they do, we'll, we'll bring it back up for discussion and then. See if we want to try to. You know, right size it again. That was it. I don't have a date for training yet with the, with the corp council. I, I'm kind of thinking we should push it off. Till the fall, because I don't think you guys are, you know, you've done, done some recent training on our own. Through Connecticut Bard, some other people are still looking at that, but if you wanted to do it sooner, we could. I don't think there's a time crunch as far as any requirements to meet. Continue, continuing ops on uh, your, your part.
Was that the thing that was originally scheduled for February twenty sixth?
Yeah, we had to cancel that because.
Okay.
Conflict after the fact, so you're, you're free.
Is there, is there any way that maybe you can do some like ad hoc, the, the thing of, on training? That I'd love for folks to get, I guess there's two pieces of this. One is sort of like ex parte communication, what that is and what are the bounds around that? Like, I don't care if it's Mario or you're stuck dog. Uh, but if, if that's something you can consider doing or if there's a refresher on that, it could just be a, I don't know what, a, a small thing on that. And then the other thing, I know there was talks potentially of moving us to city. Email addresses for zoning stuff in particular, which I'd like to do for FOIA reasons, if that still can still happen regardless of. Of um. The training, that would be great, but I don't know if that's, those things are married or not.
Yeah, those are both good points. So yeah, let me, let me circle back because the, the, the ex parte one and, and the. The FOIA issues are, are two really important ones regardless of some of the other items. So yeah, I'll, I'll circle back with Mario.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, and I think I did send out an email to folks about the date. I'll send another one. I have a few people reply, but not everybody, so let me, let me do that.
Steve, uh, I have uh, my outstanding comments. Uh, do you have answers?
I do not, sorry. They're, they're on the list, but other things bump that back down to the bottom of the list, I'm sorry.
I've got a third one to add, um. I was walking in front of Harborside Sono. Almost all of the trees there are now gone. So, I'd like the staff to look into that.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't aware of that, but thank you for.
You mean dead, right? Really?
Still standing, the others have been cut.
On Water Street?
Yeah.
Maybe because some of them were dead this summer, I noticed, but I'm just guessing.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Yeah.
I think we need to get Lou a badge that says zoning enforcement. Uh, czar, and you can just like walk around the city with a.
Looking threatening.
Looking for it, yeah.
No, that's what we have a staff for.
You're so much better at it.
Okay. I'd like to. Jump in here and move on.
Yeah, go for it, Galen.
Uh, our election of uh, vice chair. Normally, the secretary would move up to vice chair. When I moved up. From vice chair to chair. But uh, J J is at graduate school and she really does not want to move up to vice chair. Which means that we have an opening. Uh, the opening is just. Until, no, October. In October, we'll have another. You know, committee that will get together. And dominate. People and all of the. Positions I think would be. Would be up for consideration. At that point, um. So. I would. like to dominate our Chapin Bryce to be Vice Chair. I talked to him and he said he'd be willing to do it.
I would second that.
Okay, is everybody good with that?
Do we need to do a formal vote?
Let's do a formal vote so he can't back out.
Thanks, Lou.
I vote yes.
Okay, great. So everyone's okay with that. And anyone else who would like to think about being Vice Chair, being Chair, being Secretary, you know, think about it in an October. There is another opportunity, you know, I think I would probably step down as Chair. Because we should be passing it to a younger generation. Not that I'm terribly, terribly old. Or of, you know, bordering on the the terribly old, but in any event, there will be opportunities for people that I think they should. You know, people should think about it. So, so we're, we all good with that is?
All in favor? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations?
All in favor.
Aye.
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 Aye, good.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Galen, for the nomination and Lou for the second.
Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you all. Thank you.
You can tape in.
Yeah, you're welcome, J J. Um, I had one other like comment of commissioners, um which was I had the opportunity last week to go to the Urban Plan Institute training that was over in Stanford. Um, Nick, I'm sorry that you weren't able to go, but I did enjoy taking your spot and not only did I get to play with Legos. Uh, but we got to practice developing five and a half city blocks in the role of a developer. So um, each team was set up of like four to five people and they had different roles. And I was assigned the site planner, so change positions a bit. And yeah, it was, it was a really interesting exercise. And the the culmination of it was, you know, presenting to like the the common council that they that they had put together. And then like a project was selected to win. Um, naturally, it was a scenario design where like there was no perfect solution and there was like a financial model we had to work against and the R F P and certain goals and historic preservation and balancing like different types of uses. I I thought it was a really interesting workshop. Uh, I realize budgets are tight and I have no idea what it costs to run one of these things, but I I think others might be interested in that. Um, and Stanford did run one. Maybe it's something that like West Cog would be interested in doing and um, we could attend as a part of that and do it more regionally, but it was really wonderful that Stanford put that on and extended an invite to us. It was, it was a lot of fun.
Excellent.
Yeah, and I want to apologize to everybody for my Zoom issue today. Apologize to Nick, who had to you know, chair the meeting without planning on showing the meeting.
All good.
You know, but hopefully that is solved. And when I was out of my phone, I'd never been on a phone before. I couldn't see everybody. It was
Yeah, you can't.
Totally impossible. But in any event, I'm sorry about that. That won't happen again. Cold flush.
If so.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Steve or anybody, do you guys know what, with these new buildings being built, I don't know if the rules are different than just regular noise ordinance, but in terms of like construction and when how late they're allowed to work on these sites or how early they're allowed to start work? Does anybody know?
Yeah, that's right in the noise ordinance. Um, I I'd have to look at to confirm the hours, but they're longer, um Monday through Friday and then shorter on the weekends. But I, yeah, it's right on. It's right, if you just Google the city of Norwalk ordinance is in the noise ordinance, but that's got the the hours in there.
Okay, thanks. But it's not different for the big projects than anything else.
All the same, yeah.
Unless there was like emergency construction, like a water main broke or something like that, that's, you know, might be an exempt thing, but if it's just typical like what you're seeing on West Avenue, for example, no, they're they're governed by the same rules.
Thank you.
And not to say that people don't skirt those, but that's a different story.
Uh, any other comments from the commissioners? Seeing none. Wonderful. Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Uh, thank you, everyone. Thank you for dealing with my messiness tonight. Uh, next meeting is the nineteenth, is that right, Steve?
Correct.
Uh, so see y'all there. If not before.
Good night.
Stay well, everyone.
Good night.